Good morning. We're going to get started today with an invocation from Lori Walkie, pastor of Mayflower Congregational UCC Church. And that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Lillian Easter of Cub Scouts PAC 1500. Pastor Walkie? Please stand.
Will you join me in prayer? We're not really sure how much you're on Twitter, Holy One, but you should see some of the tweets about our mayor and city council members. You would not believe who we've elected based on some of those tweets. It's wild. They may look like regular citizens, but between the nine of them, there are communists, fascists, fundamentalists, kingpins, conspiracy theorists, and extremists. Depending on who you ask, they are all sheep in wolves' clothing. But they look all right to me, mostly. I have some concerns about the choices a few of them have made about their neckties. But, Holy One, we say this from experience, don't believe everything on the Internet, Twitter especially. Not to mention that there are some really, really remarkable things happening in our beloved city that have their roots in this room. So this morning, our prayer is for them. For JoBeth, Nikki, David, the other David, James, the other James, Larry, Todd, and Mark. So many people are counting on them. Teach them, as the psalmist says, "to number their days that they might gain a wise heart," so that they are always cognizant that the chair in which they sit is not theirs, but the community's. May they assume nothing, knowing that they will indeed have to explain, defend, adjust, mediate, compromise, and collaborate, because that's the job. Give them ears to hear as they take questions, comments, and complaints. And remind us, Holy One, to throw in a compliment every once in a while. It would do us all some good to find the good in each other. There have been times, and there will be more, when their loyalty has been questioned over differing priorities. But unity does not mean uniformity. Remind them, when they are bullied by money, or the chamber, or the way things have always been, or even each other, that you have given us a spirit not of fear, but of love and power. Let it be said of this leadership, that they lift up the lowly, fill the hungry with good things, and send the rich away empty. For as we recently heard, there is wisdom in knowing that today it may be your neighbor who bears the load, but tomorrow it may be you. Most of us are three bad months from being homeless, but never three good months from being in the 1 percent. May their allocation of our collective resources reflect that truth. Bless the mayor and this council, God, and we ask this with sincere hearts. Our prayers are not perfunctory. We need them to govern with grace, compassion, and courage, because so many depend on them. We are pulling for these people around this horseshoe, Holy One, but we are also pulling for our teachers and our municipal employees. We are pulling for our neighbors and friends with disabilities, pulling for those who need mental health and substance abuse services. We are pulling for our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness. We believe that all of us need all of us to make it. We trust that this council believes it too. Now, we all have work to do, so we pray these things in the name of love itself, which hasn't failed us yet. Amen.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Walkie, and thank you, Lillian. Great jobs. All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order, and we have some items in office of the mayor. We'll start with the presentations, a couple of resolutions, and I'll make my way to the front to present those. Welcome, Kyla, Ms. Johnson, as I'm sure they call you. We would love to learn a little bit more about you, as you are our Teacher of the Month. And so for that, I will ask the clerk to please read this resolution.
Whereas Kyla Johnson has been named Teacher of the Month for March 2020 by the Mustang Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Kyla teaches pre-kindergarten at Prairie View Elementary in Mustang and was named Mustang District Teacher of the Year for the 2018-2019 school year. Whereas Kyla graduated from Southwestern Oklahoma State University with a degree in elementary education with an endorsement in early childhood education. She has been in education for 18 years. One year in 3rd grade in Amarillo, Texas, two years in 6th grade teaching all subjects at Mustang Middle School, and 15 years teaching pre-K at the Mustang Education Center and Prairie View Elementary. Whereas Kyla is passionate about the importance of early childhood education as a means of establishing a solid foundation for schooling. She was one of the founding teachers for the district's pre-K program, having started programs at the Mustang Education Center in Prairie View, and has served as a champion for the expansion of pre-K in Mustang. Whereas she received a grant of $1,300 from the Mustang Public Schools Foundation to use for a mobile STEM cart to benefit students from pre-K through 2nd grade. Whereas Kyla is a third-generation educator. Her grandmother, Juanita Reed, taught 2nd grade in Davidson, Oklahoma. Her father, Jim Reed, was a teacher, coach, principal, and superintendent for Northside Independent School District in Texas. Her mother, Dorothy Reed, taught elementary through high school at Northside Independent School District in Texas. And her brother Jim and his wife Tanya are also teachers at Northside. It is truly a family business, as her family instilled in her the power and love of education at a very young age. Whereas Kyla accomplishes all of this with the love and support of her husband Jeremy and children Landon, Jenny, and Eli. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Kyla Johnson on her selection as the March 2020 Teacher of the Month by Mustang Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Well, thank you. What a great history and what a great thing you've done, championing early education in the Mustang area, which, of course, we fondly refer to here as Western Oklahoma City. But there's probably more people, a superintendent would know, who live in Oklahoma City and attend Mustang schools than actually live in Mustang. So we're very grateful for your service to the kids out there, and we'd love for you to say a few words.
Well, I just want to thank you today and everyone up here for this opportunity. It's been an amazing year representing Mustang and Oklahoma City area. And just want to thank my superintendent, Charles Bradley, for supporting me, and my husband, Jeremy Johnson. But just thank you again for this opportunity. I love education, and just what little difference I can make, I want to try.
You're making a big difference. We would love to adopt this. Councilman McAtee, that's your ward, you want to lead us off? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Let's hear it for Mrs. Johnson. Congratulations. All right, let's bring up Elizabeth. Oh, no, no, sorry. You, Elizabeth, yes. Guess we'll hear from you later, Elizabeth. All right. You are our Employee of the Month, and so we are going to hear a little bit more about you if the clerk would read this resolution.
Whereas Elizabeth Farago has been a city employee for nine years and is the city's senior court clerk for the Office of Court Services of the Municipal Court Department. Whereas Elizabeth works as a liaison with new clerks, updates records efficiently, assists jury division cases, and is a backup for jail and juvenile cases. Whereas Elizabeth ensures the Court Services Division is giving the most accurate information and customer service to citizens, visitors, and other city departments. Whereas Elizabeth takes people under her wing and is exceptionally kind-hearted to everyone she meets. Whereas Elizabeth is a very compassionate person, as evidenced by her giving an extra pair of her shoes to a shoeless defendant who was due in court. Whereas Elizabeth is a dependable and mindful employee, she stays light when needed and is detail-oriented. Whereas this council desires to recognize Elizabeth Farago for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Elizabeth Farago, March 2020, South Oklahoma City Quanah Club Employee of the Month.
Well, thank you very much. That's a little bit of a story about giving your shoes. That's very impressive. She said that was supposed to be a secret. Well, it is now in a council resolution, so that's about as public as it gets. Well, thank you for your service. We'd love to adopt this resolution, and then we'll have you say a few words. Anyone care to make the motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You are the Employee of the Month, Elizabeth, and we would love to hear a few words, maybe some more stories.
No stories. I just want to say thank you to being nominated. I do try my hardest for the city of Oklahoma City. You're my family, and I'm very appreciative of being with courts.
Well said. Let's hear it for Elizabeth. Thank you. All right, we are still in office of the mayor. We have appointments, which are items C through I. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Councilman Stonecifer walked out. No worries. Passes unanimously. All right, we have item four, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have two items we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. All right, now we're at item five, Requests for Uncontested Continuances. We have two things already listed, item 9A7 and item 9B. Any other items, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, on page two, item 6B is a request to be stricken. On page eight, and that was requested by the applicant, page eight, under the consent docket, item 7U, this item was requested by the Public Works Department so they could do some more work on that agreement. On item nine, under individual consideration, items for individual consideration, page 15, item 9A6. And on this one, the applicant has requested to defer this item to June the 9th. So it's a deferral to June the 9th on item 9A6. On page 19, under item 9J1, on dilapidated structures, these items will all be stricken. Item I, 2025 Northeast 17th Street, the owner is removed. Item J, 641 Northeast 29th Street, to re-notify the owner. Items, under item 9K1, unsecured structures. Item C, 1429 East Euclid Street, and it's also addressed as 1433 East Euclid Avenue, and we need to re-notify the owner. Item I, 3925 Northwest 10th Street, the owner has secured. Item J, 1130 Northwest 12th Street, the owner has secured. Item R, on page 20, item R, 619 Southwest 32nd Street, the owner has secured. All those items are stricken from the agenda. On page 20, also, under item 9L1, abandoned buildings. Item D, 1429 East Euclid Street, to re-notify the owner. Item K, 3925 Northwest 10th, the owner has secured. Item L, 1130 Northwest 12th Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 641 Northeast 29th Street, to re-notify the owner. And that's all the items that I have.
Okay, that brings us back to item six, revocable permits. We have item A here, a joint revocable permit with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and the University of Oklahoma Cycling Club to hold the Land Rendez 2020. And we do have someone who signed up to speak, Jared Johnson.
So I'm Jared. I'm one of the event directors of the University of Oklahoma Land Rendez. This is our second year holding this race. It's a combination of collegiate riders and non-collegiate riders coming from Oklahoma, Texas, and other surrounding states, even as far as Nebraska. We are excited to draw people into Oklahoma City. We have been working closely with the parks, water trusts, and Oklahoma City Police Department to satisfy all requirements for both parties to ensure another successful event this year. I'll just tell you a little bit about our race. Our race weekend consists of three events, to which the road race and time trial will take place at Draper this Saturday with permit approval, the third event occurring in Norman, Oklahoma. The race is a 13.5-mile loop around Draper with multiple loops being done by riders depending on skill level. The time trial will take place on the east side of the lake and is 6.2 miles in length. Races will start at 9:00 on Saturday and end around 5:00. We are renting the recreational areas on the north side of the lake for parking and staging, and throughout the event, we will have up to five police officers working and facilitating traffic, and we will have paramedics on site to assist with any injuries. But we feel, overall, we feel prepared and ready to have this event this weekend, as long as you guys approve it.
Thank you. Councilman Stone?
Thanks. It sounds like a great event. I was just curious on whether it was Rendez, is that right?
Yes.
And Rendez. I like it.
I don't know if you need to roll the R, but sure.
I think it's kind of cool if you roll the R on it, but I would certainly move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Have a great event. Okay, so item B was stricken, which brings us to 6C, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with N-Motive Oklahoma to Hold Run Lucky 5K and Mission Mile Fun Run. And we do have someone who signed up to speak, Rick Ailing.
Morning, Mayor, Council. This is the 10th year of Run Lucky. We've been raising funds for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Throughout that time, we've raised several thousand dollars through this race, and we're looking forward to it. It's going to be a great run again.
Right. Councilwoman Hammond?
Sounds like a great event. I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6D, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with the Oklahoma City County Health Department to Hold Open Streets on April 5th, and we have Craig Baumann.
Good morning. I'm Craig Baumann with Prodigal, and we work with our friends at OCCHD to put on the Open Streets event. Open Streets is an event where we close down a street to traffic and open it up for active lifestyles, walking, biking, and that sort of thing. This will be our seventh Open Streets event on the north side of town, taking place in Uptown on 23rd Street between Robinson and Western. It'll take place on April 5th. And last year's, we had about 60 activity vendors there, providing healthy activities, getting people out, getting people active along the route. We had 15 food trucks as well, to make sure that people had some healthy options to eat. We expect both those numbers to be similar this year, or even actually a little bit higher. Looking forward to a great event. Seven years in a row, turnout keeps going up. We love doing it, so hope to do it again.
One of the best events in town. Councilman Cooper?
Yeah, thank you for hosting these. I'm excited to see it in Ward 2. I just think it's such an important thing. You all know that. That's why you do it. That's why we want it for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. 6E, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with the Professional Basketball Club, LLC, to Hold the Thunder Run on March 7th. And looks like Brian Pack has signed up to speak.
My name is Brian. I'm with the Oklahoma City Thunder. I'm here in regards to our third annual Thunder Run. It is this Saturday. We have two runs coming up, Rumble Family Fun Run, which starts at 9:00 a.m., followed by the Thunder Run 5K, which starts at 9:30. And we've been working with the Oklahoma City Police Department for the street closures and just to guide the route as well. We have the street closure at 5:00 a.m. and then potentially reopening it around 11:00 o'clock afterward.
All right. Thank you. We've got, this is in Ward 6 and 7, so either one of you or both want to address it?
Well, as we thunder up today, or tonight, we also thunder up for Saturday, so with that, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we recess the council meeting, and we'll convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Where we have items A through E, we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A and B, we can take with one motion. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC-PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have items A through C, we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCEAT, convene as the council meeting, where we have the consent docket. And I am told we have no scheduled presentations on today's consent docket, but if a council member wants to pull something out for a separate discussion or for a separate vote, now would be the time to mention that.
Yeah, I asked Joanna McSpadden to come speak just briefly on AA.
AA?
Just to talk about it, no separate.
Sure. Okay. Anything else? All right, well, I guess we'll start there, then. Hopefully, she's listening.
This is an item that was previously approved by the Economic Development Trust and sustained a change in the economic development agreement. Yeah, you might. Was Joanna coming out here?
It's Joanna.
They're asking about the changes on the Edge, and Joanna was just going to speak to that. Or is she?
Nope.
Do you want to take it, or you want me to? Okay. The Edge is requesting an amendment to their economic development agreement, and in exchange for the amendment, we are going to receive a refund of about $700,000 of TIF allocation, and they will commit to providing $3 million in assistance to the first national project. This is related to the five-year no-flip rule. They actually completed the project more than five years ago, but they failed to file their paperwork on time. So we're just short by a few months, but they actually did complete the project in time, and it did show up on the county assessor's rolls, and all the other things happened. They just didn't file their paperwork on time with the city.
Thank you.
Well, seeing no further discussion, we could take a motion to approve all the items on the consent docket. I think there was one that was maybe stricken or deferred at the beginning of the meeting, but other than that? All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to the concurrence docket on page 12 of your printed agenda. Item 8, we have items A through I, we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to item 9 on your printed agenda, page 14. Items requiring separate votes, these are planning cases that were recommended for approval at the Planning Commission. Item 9A1 is at 3716 South Mabel Avenue, going from R1 to I1. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, is the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Will you come forward and explain what you are doing with the project, please?
Good morning. My name is David Hicken. I represent 1304 LLC, our grand LLC. They're basically asking for rezoning from the current zoning to industrial. It puts in conformity with their other buildings there in the area. They own two buildings just to the north of the subject property, and they're just planning on trying to get everything in the same conformity as far as used.
All right, are there any questions, or anyone sign up to speak? All right. Well, as you see, the surrounding area is also pretty much I, I too, in the area of industrial, so with that, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Thank you. 9A2, 827 North Cemetery Road, going from C3 to I1. Councilman McAtee?
Ali Gani Abadi with Brady's property, we are requesting...
Well, hold on one moment. Councilman McAtee, did you want to say anything? Okay. You're the applicant?
I'm sorry.
You're the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sure, go ahead. Stick your name if you would.
Ali Gani Abadi with Brady's property, we're requesting the lot to be zoned to I1, since it is kind of in the back. The lot is so long, so the front of it is still a C3, but the back is going to be I1 for light industrial.
Does anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Having no one here to protest, this was approved by the Planning Commission. I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. 9A3, 5,000 North Post Road, going from AA to RA2. Councilwoman Nice?
Did anyone sign up to speak for this? Okay, this is literally just splitting it into two lots, so with that, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A4, 600 West John Kilpatrick Turnpike, going from PUD 380 to PUD 1745. Councilwoman Nice?
Is the applicant present? Will you explain what's going on? I know there are some TEs in here.
Yes, ma'am. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who's also here with us. So what we have done through this PUD is, in large part, mirror the use and development regulations of that of Chisholm Creek. And so here we are along the Turnpike Frontage Road. We are east of the Costco, and so we have a mixed-use development through a PUD that would allow for commercial development, as well as an element of multifamily. There will be some reworking of the smaller pond that's there now to create a larger pond, to create a level of amenities for this development. Like I said, we've mirrored, in large part, the development regs of Chisholm Creek. There are four TEs, all of which we did agree to, with one slight modification that had the support of Planning Commission on TE number two, and the document has been amended and resubmitted to staff accordingly.
I know we've talked about the concerns as far as traffic on this area. I know, I'm not sure, I know Councilman Stonecifer would also speak to this, of what we're experiencing right now and currently, when it comes to Western, and when it comes to Memorial, and when it comes to just that turnpike in general. So I'm curious as to some of those accommodations, as far as how we're going to lighten the load with traffic, or our exits and entrances.
Yes, ma'am. So... Yes, ma'am. So we are obviously east of Western. One of the issues that exists is that road that is on the south side of Costco, although it is built to public standards, and if you were to drive on it, it would feel like a public road. It is, in fact, a private road. I'm not sure how that happened, but it is a private road, which I think perhaps may benefit the traffic issue on this site, because there will not be all that cut-through traffic. We do have two access points onto the Kilpatrick Service Road, as well as interconnectivity between the tracks. So traffic staff was presented with a copy of the PUD application and did respond with no adverse comments.
I want to keep my eyes on that, as far as the traffic is concerned, as we continue to work through this progress and this development. So don't be surprised if we continue to have that conversation when it comes to traffic.
Yes, ma'am. And in fact, to that end, some of the uses that are proposed within this development are the highest uses as it relates to the tax for traffic impact. So there will be a lot of traffic impact funds generated by the development of this site, to be able to be used, to be deployed for the general traffic issues that exist in the area.
Which explains again why I want to continue the conversation when it comes to the impact of traffic. So with that, I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes 6 to 1, right? 7 to 1?
Thank you.
Not mayor, because, you know, math on the fly is my strong suit. All right. Item 9A5, 7900 Northwest 89th Street, going from PUD 262 to PUD 1747. Councilman Greiner?
Yeah, this adds commercial uses to an existing PUD that is primarily office and had a unanimous Planning Commission approval and no protests, so I will move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9A6 was deferred. Item 9A7 was deferred, which brings us to item 9A8 at 1308 North Pennsylvania, going from SPOD 65 to SPOD 1173. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, is the applicant present? But there's no... There's no one signed up to speak, Francis?
No.
Okay. Well, this is to permit some commercial development along Penn. It is specifically stated purpose for medical marijuana growing, but I know they've worked with staff to meet all the required regulations, so I will move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Does anybody want to make a second? Surely somebody? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 9A9 at 1801 Northwest 39th, going from R1 to SPOD 1177. Councilman Cooper?
Is the applicant here? Cool.
Good morning. A call is from Philip. I'm representing Nathan Cow with Omega Investment, and we are seeking to rezone a single-family parcel to three individual, single-family homes. And I will note, there is a comment here that says, let's see, easement requested but not submitted. We've been working with staff on getting that documentation finalized, so I think we got that notedized copy to the staff yesterday, so I'm not sure if you guys moved to approve. I don't know if that's something we could add as a condition, or I don't know if staff could comment on whether there's the required documentation.
How does that work?
James, there's a legal question.
It would be an amendment added to the item, an item to amend, to add that condition. Is that what you were referring to, Bob?
Yeah, I don't know how, I mean, how to, you know, what the technical term would be, but they just said easement requested but not submitted. So we've been working through that. I don't know if we just didn't get that submitted in time for this hearing date or something.
Bob Teener, Development Services Director. We received the easement yesterday, so we're good.
Good?
Yeah.
Well...
Yeah, please. Well, just a comment. The reason the easement's requested is kind of an awkward lot, so there's not a lot of right-of-way, and it is a denser development, so we are basically granting the city the easement to provide some extra space for that right-of-way along Indiana, I believe, is the street.
May I ask, and it's kind of rare I get to do this, why this area? Like, why did you all choose right here on this kind of corner lot to build these projects, these homes?
Well, this is really, I think, our third project that's similar to this. One of them was near OCU, also a corner lot. We've all been corner lots, mostly because access is easier that way. In this case, we have one house facing the corner, along with all the other houses, and then we have two houses behind it that are facing Indiana. And what we have found is there's a desire for this kind of product in the market, kind of a denser, you know, less yard, denser development, and especially this part of the city, you've got Klassen, you've got 39th Street, you know, Penn. There's so many improvement projects happening, the BRT. I think this makes sense for these areas to densify a little bit, and we consider this kind of a soft densification, where, you know, it's not a huge multifamily development necessarily. It's kind of a neighborhood-scale development, but, you know, I think it fits into the fabric of existing neighborhoods, but it does add a little bit of density to the neighborhood.
Really, I'm encouraged by your approach to this particular project, so with that, I would move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you. 9A10, 505 Oakdale Drive, going from SPOD 709 to SPOD 1181. Councilman McAtee?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? If you can forward. This particular lot of land has got some interesting challenges to it. If you would explain to the council what it's being used for right now, what it's going to be used for, and some of the mitigating things that you've put in to try to improve the design of the property?
Sure. David Box, 522 Callcord Drive. So currently, this site is zoned pursuant to a spud that limits it to growing field crops, as well as the growth and sale of tilapia. There's a retail building that was established on the side as well, so we're simply taking it from crops and tilapia to marijuana. A lot of the same facilities that are on-site will be used. There are some additional fencing and buffer requirements, as staff had suggested, all of which we agreed to. We did discuss that at Planning Commission. It was met with unanimous support at Planning Commission. It is also recommended for approval pursuant to your comprehensive plan. If you look at this area immediately across Melrose, it's a very industrialized area, so the use is not a use that will be, I think, out of character with the area. So with that, we happen to answer any questions after your approval.
There's also a neighborhood to the west of the Briarwood neighborhood. Will this impact it in any way, David?
I'm sorry?
Will this impact it in any way?
I don't believe so. These types of facilities are very secure. All of the growth is indoors, camera systems throughout, and so I do not believe that there will be any issues.
And nobody had showed up at either the... I have the Planning Commission to protest?
That's correct. No one was present at Planning Commission.
Has anybody signed up today? Based on that, unless there's some questions in the council, I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item 9A11, 12200 North Piedmont Road, going from AA to SPOD 1182. Councilman Greiner?
Yeah, this is going to be a personal storage out on Piedmont Road, just south of 122nd. It had unanimous Planning Commission approval, and there are no protests, so I will move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A12, 3312 Northwest 135th Street, going from PUD 249 to SPOD 1185. Councilman Stonecifer isn't here. I don't know if he asked anybody to...
Yeah, he got to me. I know he fully supports this project, and it had unanimous approval at the Planning Commission. Francis, has anyone signed up to speak?
No.
With that, I would move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A13, 4101 and 4107 South Shields Boulevard, going from R2 to SPOD 1186. Councilman Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that, again, received unanimous approval at the Planning Commission. Francis, anyone signed up?
No.
Okay. Actually, it's a project I'm pretty happy with. It just brings more housing into the area, so affordable housing. So with that, I would move for approval.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9B was deferred. 9C is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval. Special permit to operate a transportation facility, helipad, in the I-2 moderate industrial district at 5505 South Portland. Councilman McAtee?
Yes, thank you. Is anyone here from the police to speak to this?
We can get the chief to come out if you can give him a second. You want to move on to the next one, then come back?
That's fine with me, I think, okay.
Yeah. This is just on the relocation of the helipad from where it is right now at the downtown airport, and moving it over by the Southwest Briefing Station, or the Southwest Briefing Station. That's what we're doing.
The reason I'm questioning it, a gentleman from that neighborhood to the east of I-44 suggested that the noise level might be adversely affected by putting a helicopter pad in that location. I just wanted someone to speak to that, so that it lay their concerns.
The chief, Councilman McAtee was asking about this item, it's item C, moving the helipad, and there was a question from a neighbor about potential for noise there. It's right on the edge of the airport, right? It's right on the edge of the airport property.
Correct. It's on the north end of the airport, on the east side of the runway and the main approach, so it's the jet traffic and everything that's already there. This isn't going to be adding to that anything significantly at all.
Thank you, chief.
You bet, sir.
Has anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Since that, I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9D1 is an ordinance on final hearing. This is the third of three meetings where we are hearing about the mechanical code. I would entertain a motion for final consideration. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. And I am... it passes unanimously, and I am told also that we seek the emergency on this.
Yes.
Got a motion and a second on the emergency. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9D2 is a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the International Mechanical Code. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9E1 is an ordinance on final hearing relating to the plumbing code. This is the third of three meetings where we have heard this, and today there's potential final consideration. I'd entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and I am equally told here that we desire the emergency. Got a motion and a second for the emergency on item 9E1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We now are at 9E2, a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the International Plumbing Code. Got a motion and a second on the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9F is a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the International Fuel-Gas Code. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now we're back at parking. 9G, ordinance on final hearing establishing a no parking any time restriction on the east side of Bloomfield Place, between Northwest 189th Street and Northwest 192nd Street. That's Word 8. Councilman Stonecifer's not here. You want to handle that one again, Councilman Stone?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This is for an ordinance for no parking at any time between 189th and Northwest 192nd, as presented by the HOA, and no Councilman Stonecifer's in favor of it, so I'd move for approval.
All right. Also known as an hour and a half from your house.
Yes. It's a long ways up there.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on item 9G. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9H, this is an ordinance on final hearing adopting and ratifying the assessment role for street improvement assessment district number 1626 in Thornbury Place addition. Eric Weiner did a presentation on this at a previous meeting, so this is the second meeting of consideration. I don't know, Councilman McAtee, if you want to lead the way on this, but we could consider it on final hearing today and adopt the ordinance.
Is the applicant present?
Well, this... Well, I don't know if this is quite that. This is an improvement district for Thornbury Place. Usually, you make the motion.
I move for approval.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9I, so this is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on March 17th, final hearing on March 31st, relating to motor vehicles, traffic, and municipal court. In actuality, it's a parking restriction along our streetcar line, and we've got a presentation on that.
Yes, Jason Fairbrush is here from Embark to give us a presentation, just give us an update on what changes we're looking for in this ordinance.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jason Fairbrush, Director of Public Transportation Parking. And yeah, just a few notes for you this morning on this item. So the ordinance that you have here is intended to help us further encourage people to park correctly along the streetcar route. We've had discussions in the past with council about one of our biggest obstacles in terms of operations is blockages along the route when individuals that are parallel parking do not park properly. They're too far away from the curb, or over the designated parking line, and it brings the system to a stop. So what we're looking at today is amending Chapter 32 and 33, and I'll go through those changes very briefly. On Chapter 32, Section 32-96, this is vehicles constituting a hazard, and what we're doing is we're simply specifying that a vehicle is deemed to be an obstruction anytime it's over the designated parking line or it's within the lane of traffic. And so by being designated as an obstruction, then obviously the vehicle could be towed if needed. Also, on Section 32-314, this has to do with parking close to the curb, and again, we're specifying that if an individual is parallel parking along the streetcar route, they must park within 18 inches of the curb or closer. There are no exceptions. Previous language referenced some exceptions. And then on Section, let's see, I'm sorry, on Section 33-64, this is the schedule of fines for parking violations, and we're recommending amending the fine section to increase the fine for illegally parking along the streetcar route alignment to $130 from just the standard illegal parking fine currently of $50. And again, these changes are really being made in trying to encourage people to park correctly along the streetcar route, assuming the ordinance goes into place, and we, obviously, as a streetcar operator, will do our best through social media and other means to alert people to the significance of parking correctly along the alignment.
So I have a quick question. So I know right now there's some legislation at the state level that would make it... make a change that would allow for the streetcar operators to call for a tow truck. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, clarify if I'm saying it wrong. I don't know.
That's right.
And so do we... do we need to change this for that to be effective or put in place at the state level?
I do think so, because I think, really, both this ordinance and then the legislation we have at the state give us the best chance of success in reducing blockages. This here, I think, allows us to be able to basically penalize for illegally parking. The other one is really more operational in that it saves us time. If we, as the streetcar operator, can go ahead and call for that tow when someone has violated the parking, then we're able to just respond quicker.
So it doesn't... it doesn't... it's not legally required to have the other. Each one can stand independently, but to Jason's point, it just helps us to be more effective in managing that.
So in a scenario, if the state legislation passes, so would we ticket and tow them?
We could.
Okay. And then is there a reason that the fine is so high?
Yes.
Okay. What is that reason?
Well, quite frankly, we know, at least through the existing fine, that we continue to receive, we continue to experience a lot of blockages along the route. You know, we're averaging about 90 a month. That's down significantly from when we first launched the service. But, you know, really, the COPA Board of Trustees, I think there was some interest even from city council in saying, hey, if we're having this issue, then maybe we deal with it through, you know, an increased fine along the streetcar route because of the significance of what parking, illegally parking along the streetcar route does compared to illegally parking somewhere else. Now illegally parking anywhere else, a vehicle can maybe maneuver around an illegally parked vehicle. But on the streetcar route, again, as we've mentioned, it shuts the entire system down.
Right.
So that's really, I think, the reason.
Okay. I guess, and I think I, when that came up a few months ago, I think from my perspective, my worry about this is, well, one, people coming downtown and then getting this very big ticket and potentially even getting towed. So then having to pay to get their car back are, kind of like puts a bad taste in people's mouths about coming downtown. But then also, from my perspective, and I actually had this come up recently in another scenario where it feels like we, as a city, could be more proactive and just not have parking along the streetcar route, because then we're not, we're taking the burden of that and not putting it on individuals who, I think, you know, in some ways, I understand the idea that a fine might be preventative or make people think twice. But I don't think psychologically, people interact with them that way. It's maybe that one person on an individual basis has now learned their lesson. But as a whole, I don't think it, that's not, it's like that one person instead of actually fixing the problem on like a sort of design level and a preventative level. So that's kind of where my questions are coming from. I just wanted to see if, from the state perspective, if this is legally required. So, but I appreciate your.
I do, I do acknowledge, I mean, we certainly are in a little bit of a reactionary mode. It's a new transit mode for us, and we're trying to use every tool that we have to reduce the blockages. But also, I can't predict the future, but looking in the past, the number of vehicles that we actually tow, I mean, are very few. I mean, our objective is really not to try to encourage citations or encourage towing vehicles. We just want the vehicles removed so we can resume service. And what we find, almost in every case, is we're able to locate the vehicle operator and get them to move. It takes, on average, about 15 to 20 minutes in some cases to make that happen. But generally, that's what happens really before anyone is towed.
Could you get me numbers of how many people have been towed?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
But just, I'm sorry, just to be clear, though, the only time you would receive that heavier ticket would be if you're impeding, correct, the streetcar?
Yes. You're impeding the streetcar, shut the streetcar system down, and we can't locate you to move your vehicle.
You would lose your vehicle. But is that the only time you'd get the, what is it, $130 ticket? Or are we going to be proactively looking for someone that's illegally parked, even though they may not be impeding the line?
I hate to defer the question, but I mean, with police doing the enforcement, that's something we really would need to work out with them.
I think it comes back to the issue of how we do enforcement of all parking, that it's, we're using judgment based upon the circumstances. And so it's not just, I mean, they're going to be judicious in the way they enforce this and use this, but it's just another tool for us to be able to do it. I don't think it's going to be where we're all of a sudden going to be out there writing a lot of $130 tickets. It's going to be a tool that we can use if we've got issues with someone impeding the traffic or impeding the streetcar.
Thanks.
Is that, is that something that going forward, if this were to pass, we could kind of keep an eye on how often we're issuing these citations versus being able to just get, you know, locate the driver and asking them to move their car?
Sure, yeah. We could, we could track those citations.
And then, we're back to the councilperson's point, as we've done this parking study with the consultant, is that something that we can seriously think about, which is the parking along, you know, the streetcar route and being able to kind of look at the cost benefit analysis of whether or not there should just be no parking along that route?
We've already had an instance where we've talked about that with the development, where we've made a decision not to allow additional on-street parking in a specific area where we've had challenges. And I think from Jason's standpoint, they're continuing to evaluate and see if there's particular areas that are specific problems to us that we want to address, because we want to balance that with not taking away potential parking there for businesses, you know, in front of the businesses. So we don't want to just go out and blanket take that away. But I think it's evaluating where we have the problem areas. And if we have to come back with a recommendation, it's certainly, as we evaluate, that's something we can bring back to the council.
Is there, I'd like to see, like, where we are with some of that research. Like, where are some areas where that, like, where are we looking, where are we thinking down the road? Doesn't have to be tomorrow that I need to see that, but I would like to have a better sense of that approach.
Sure. We currently track that, track blockages and problem areas by block face. And just within the last probably month and a half, we began tracking by individual space. So we should, individual parking space, we have those numbered now. So we should be able to provide that information to council if there's, if there's interest, absolutely.
Jason, two questions. So is it the body of the vehicle, or could something such as a outside mirror create a situation?
Any, any part of the vehicle protruding over the line. There we go.
Right, okay.
And a lot of cases, it's, a lot of times, it's, you know, big mirrors on pickups that a lot of times we'll just fold them in going down the road.
Right. Now, have we placed any signs out yet identifying the potential penalty or fine for illegal parking?
We have not. But once this, if this ordinance is approved, that is something we would like to work with the Traffic Commission or whatever other regulatory group we need to meet with to see how we can sign it, what the options are.
Yeah, I would say it should be a component of this ordinance that we at least use the funds to better inform potential.
Yeah, the goal here isn't to write citations. The goal here is to help the streetcar keep moving. And really, we do try to warn people, even painting on the, on the lines where the parking is, to notice that, that that's illegal parking, you know, you could be towed, that that's helped, even helped with people's response to that. So certainly, that would be our approach, is trying to influence behavior as opposed to fining people.
Right. Thank you. And then relatedly to the signage, just thinking about the educational effort in terms of kind of marketing with social media or something, kind of letting people, people become more aware of why it's important that we're not blocking that.
Yeah, that, I mean, that has to be part of the plan. That will be part of our plan. And really, that's, again, not try citations, but to let people know the significance of illegally parking along the route. Hopefully help us educate.
Okay, so what we're doing today is introducing it. So you're moving for introduction. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion in a second to introduce the ordinance. Again, it will have a public hearing on March 17th, potential final hearing on March 31st. So certainly time for further consideration in the weeks ahead. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Introduced unanimously. Okay, now we are at dilapidated structures on page 19 of your printed agenda. Item 9J1. This is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, except for the ones stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing?
Yes. Every time, first, when it go out in northeast side of Como City. Now, what were we here? Let's see, which one of those is northeast, Ward 7th quadrant? Let's see. Lord have mercy. Oh, excuse me. Michael Watson, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Thank you. Okay, man, I'll help you board that, board those up if you need. Oh, oh, go ahead. It was 641 Northeast 29th. Yeah, excuse my eyes, kind of. Yeah.
I think that one was stricken.
Oh, okay. I can't tell which, okay, lot at 2121 North, Lot A Avenue. Man, definitely need to do something with it, indeed. So have you already contacted those people? Let them know they need to correct that, man?
Chad Davidson, code enforcement. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Let's go to the next one. Wait, 2025 Northeast 17th?
I believe that one was stricken.
Okay. Was it 1032 Harris Avenue? Is that? Okay, yeah. I'll tell you what, man. I mean, I'm, I'm pull people on the east side, but let me tell you something, man. It brings down property value and another, oh, goodness, yes. Okay, next one. I need to contacting people myself, so is that concerned? What is that, 5233 Avenue? Yeah, 5233 Grace Avenue. Yeah. Is that on east side too? Oh, Lord have mercy. Yeah, man, I tell you, we need to be more, yeah, more concerned and considerate for people around. Oh, man, yes, go ahead. Okay, I think that'll do it, man. I just want, so you already contacted those folks as well?
Yes, sir.
And what was their response?
Didn't have any response. First one on the property, and then we've mailed one to the owner.
I'm good with the rest. Whoa, 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 whoa. What was that, 1429 East Euclid, AK? Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9J2, declaring that the structures are dilapidated.
Give the resolution.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we are at 9K1. This is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for the ones stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing regarding these unsecured structures?
Yes.
Well, the same ones that, 416 Northeast 15th Street, please, if I can see that. Unsecured, what do you mean by that? It looks like it's pretty, oh, okay, the windows are. All right. That's good enough. Oh, yeah, definitely. You're absolutely right. Absolutely. You can all kind of beguins and things, can run in houses and do dope and all that. You better believe drinking. Yeah, I'll go for you on that one. You're right. Okay, next one. 2020, that was the one I just saw, 2025, I think. Oh, the back door. Yeah. Okay, that's good on that. I'm just trying to, like, see, because I usually go in the neighborhoods. I'm trying to find out, so I'll be going by these places. Let's see. That's good. I remember them. That's good. Thank you. That's good.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9K2, declaring that the structures are unsecured.
Give the resolution.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9L1, this is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under this public hearing?
Yes.
Can you give a better definition of what abandoned buildings mean?
Abandoned buildings, when we declare one dilapidated or unsecured, we also declare those structures abandoned. And with that, it helps us, it's as a tool to bring those properties into compliance and maybe also charge for other services that the city may have to provide there, such as police or fire calls.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, is it months when you determine if they're abandoned? I mean, I don't understand how that lump in there. I mean.
The council will declare that today.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to get at. I mean, even if I don't live at my house, it don't mean I abandoned it. I may not have straightened it up. I may need to board it up. But abandonment, that seems like a broad interpretation.
Right, that's, that's our ordinance that was approved by the council.
Okay, so it's no really set time, month, two months, three weeks?
Well, that's declared here.
Okay, so, hmm, that sounds like a little itchy one. Yeah. Okay, what about, is that 5528 Karen Drive? Now, that may look like that's about abandoned. Okay, oh. Yeah, I'm going by these places. Today, I'm going to give you all some hand and help. I don't like what I'm looking at. All right, thank you. That's good enough.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak under this public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9L2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to 9M. This is a resolution to be introduced and set for public hearing and final consideration on March 17th, approving an allocation of up to $200,000 to One Red Oak LLC. And I believe you have a presentation.
Yes, Anita Bridges is here with One Red Oak to give us a presentation on this project.
Good morning. Welcome. Thank you very much for having me. I'm pleased to be here to introduce this project. It's the Harmony School Project. It is a, a affordable housing project, which we believe is a very important one for the community. Located at 1537 Northeast 24th Street, which is the corner of 24th and Jordan, between Jordan and Prospect. And it goes, runs from 24th Street north to 26th Street. The Harmony School Project, we believe to be very important for several reasons. One, it's an opportunity to renovate and repurpose a historically significant school. It was built in 1928, built and began as a high school, I'm sorry, an elementary school in 1928, was last used as the Marcus Garvey Leadership Charter School, which closed in 2014. Since that time, it's been sitting dilapidated and rundown in the neighborhood, doing nothing to improve the looks of the neighborhood. We'd like to change that. We'd like that to become a significant historical monument, I should say, to the building that it once was. We plan to repurpose that into a 40-unit development of affordable housing, senior affordable housing. And I want to explain that because it's a senior family housing development, which means that not all of the residents of the development must be over 50, must be seniors, as long as one of those is over 50. This recognizes, I think, the change in our demographics, in our society, and in families, so that we have now a very intergenerational family situation. You have grandparents raising grandchildren. You have adult children living at home with their parents. And this allows for that situation. It recognizes the situation and allows for it to be dealt with in a affordable and humane way. So we are planning to do the affordable senior family. We also plan, in addition to that, to have community support facilities. You'll notice on the, on the rather crude drawing there, the school itself, there is an auditorium, which we plan to renovate and use as an auditorium, perhaps put a demonstration kitchen in there. We plan to have a community building, which would provide for, for instruction, teaching, adult teaching and training, tutoring for schoolchildren. We want to have a business center and workspace in there, which would provide for perhaps also an incubator program eventually, and, and maybe a coffee shop, sandwich shop, a place for people to gather. You all. You also see there's a community garden, which we want to encourage the community to participate in, to build their own food garden. So we're looking at this not only as a space to house people, but also a community investment that will allow the community to take something and put it back, that will allow the community to have something for itself as well as the residents there. And then finally, I guess, I think this is important because we hope this will be a spark which will ignite further development in an area which is seeking development and needs development. The unit, the project, as I said, is a 40-unit project. The school itself will house 21 and 2-bedroom apartments. Additionally, we're going to be building townhomes, which will be 2- and 3-bedroom townhomes, another 20 of those. We're limited in how many we can build because, under the historic regulations, historic structure regulations, we can only put in as many new units as we can make out of the old building, the historic building, and we can only do 20 units there, so that means we can only put up 20 additional structures. Now, we're coming to you because we have, there's a resolution that we want to see you adopt pursuant to your regulations concerning the TIF funds of up to $200,000 in TIF requests, which we're making, as well as $1 million in Oklahoma City Affordable Housing Funds. If you look at the usages of the monies that we're looking for, we have a 9.115 million-dollar project, and what we need are additional funds in order to make that project happen. We have already applied to the, to OFA for $3,220,000 in usage, plus state revenues from OFA for the project itself. We have already received the national credits, state, national, federal historic credits, as well as national state historic credits, and with that, and our permanent debt financing, deferred developer's fee, we are willing to defer the fee on development so that we can make this a viable project. We have ni... we will, well, I'm sorry, let me look at my notes here. We need $9,115,771 in order to complete this project. We have a gap currently, assuming that we get our state funding through OFA, we will have a gap of $1,352,313. The request that's being made to the city is for $1 million. The $352,313 are monies that we will defer as developers in order to make this project work. We've applied to OFA, we applied to OFA in 2019 for the tax funding through their tax credit program, and were not able to make it because our request was too large for the amount of funds that they had available. The project, they thought, was viable, however, they ran out of money. So what we have done is, we've been able to go back and reevaluate and find other sources for those funds, so that we could go back in, which we did in January, and make a second request for federal funding as well as state funding. In 2019, the state funds were not available to us because they were not available to those who were doing projects in Oklahoma, Oklahoma County. That law has changed to allow us to now seek those funds. That puts a, takes away the large burden that we had placed on the federal funds, and allows us to go in and request fewer funds from the federal OFA project. We believe we have a very good chance of receiving funding by, through OFA this time because the ask is very much lower, less than 50% of what it was in 2019 when we went in and made our application. Additionally, our, they look at the numbers of points that you accumulate in order to determine whether or not you are able to meet the threshold that they look at, and money is allocated as available based on the number of points that you accumulate. We are, out of the 25 applications that were submitted in January, we are the third highest in the number of points that have been allocated to the project, so we feel very good about it. Obviously, the request that we're making to the city today is going to be dependent upon our receiving the money from the state funds, the OFA funds. So anything that happens with regards to your participation in this is going to be subject to our receiving the funds from OFA. Any other requests, any questions that you have?
Doesn't look like it.
No.
Thank you. We do have a citizen who signed up to speak, so, from this item, so...
Okay, very much.
If you want to have a seat in the front row, we'll handle that.
Thank you.
Michael Washington?
Yes, yes, everyone, thank you. Well, well, well. For a moment, I was moved by this presentation, but right now, there's been a point of change. Now then, you want to reconstruct, redo, a very historical monument, which I find very gallantly decided by your company. However, then, there seems to be a quite trembling moment in my present state of mind that kind of concerns me that this is simply another move to ease this gentrification process that's already been underway. Why I say that, you may ask. Number one, it seems to me that, just like the place down on 6th and Ave High, the new renovated school that will turn into apartment buildings, an apartment assessment, they do a lot of stuff in the gymnasiums and all, and the auditoriums, it seems like to me they should be mimicking what is already going on there, and also to prepare us for the people that's being forced out of their homes to basically say, hey, elderly people, come out of your homes because we have a place that we can put you, as we have done down on 6th and High Street, or Stonewall, or whichever way on that area. And now you're asking for $200,000 from TIF. Interesting. Not much. Seems to me kind of light, though, in that regard. Normally, someone would have been asking for maybe a million there, maybe, at least one would be 200 or something of that nature. Family living, you don't have to be elderly, as long as you're 50 years, one of you, 50 years old. Interesting, again. Oh, but what's so lightly here? Rehabilitate and new construction is going to cost $6,382,597? Really? Y'all need to hire me, I'll charge you way less than that. Now then, net federal historic tax credits, $615,373. In closing, everyone, Michael Washington's not going to support this at the moment because I haven't had time yet to really delve off into what's really going on here. But let me say, in closing, Marcus Garvey, the preserving that historic building is significant to us, but then again, it's not going to belong to the African-American community anymore. With that, I'll say, I'd like to be giving, ma'am, further information on this, regardless of what they do today. This was the first time I've heard of this, and I may support it now, not for now.
All right, we're at three minutes, Mr. Washington, we're at three minutes.
Oh, thank you, I may support it, however, I'm at my time, let me go.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else who wish to speak? Seeing none, this is today...
I'd like to, if you don't mind. Ms. Bridges, please come back up, and I want you to explain, first, I want to make mention that we've had plenty of community meetings, we've had at least a couple of community meetings regarding this development in 2019. Now, we, again, as she stated before, they applied for OFA funds, and at that time, they were still in the process of understanding if they were going to receive those funds when we had our first initial meetings at Reverend Gaddis's church. So they've had a couple of those meetings, and at that time, they found out afterwards that they were not approved, am I correct?
Correct.
And afterwards, there was still a conversation to continue, and I want you to explain how intentional we will be when it comes to the community reflecting the residency of this particular project.
Thank you for asking that question, Councilwoman. We did have a number of meetings prior to making our, or prior to making our application to OFA. One of the things that came out of that meeting resulted in our changing, for instance, the designation of that project as a senior, solely a senior development for folks who were 50 and above, to a family senior, because there was reflected in the community, and as a result of the community outreach, that we had a need for opening up these residences to people who had intergenerational families. So that was one of the things that came out of them. The other thing that we plan to do, and we haven't done it, and I will be honest with you about this, we don't, we didn't want to talk a lot about the project because we didn't want the community to be disappointed if it didn't go through. I'm glad we didn't because it didn't go through the first time. We feel good about what's happening now, and we do plan on engaging the community once we are a little bit more sure-footed about the project going forward. I think the worst thing that we could do is get everybody's hopes up, as happened before, as I'm sure you all know with other projects, getting everybody's hopes up about a development going through, and then it collapsed, and we don't want to do that. So once the, once we have our funding in place, we know that we're able to go forward with the project, we'll be, we'll have an opportunity to engage the community further with regards to some of the things that they would like to see in terms of the community projects that we're doing. We think we had a good start on what those things were, based on the meetings that we had earlier, but we want to fine-tune those and make sure that we have an opportunity to get the community involved with that. Additionally, I have talked just a little bit with Metro Tech and some of the others about getting minority contractors involved with this project as well. We want this to be a community project from the ground up, and plan to do everything that we can to see that that happens.
Thank you for that. And with you presenting today, there is a positive and a negative. As you just explained, the positive is, yes, we're talking about this project, but then again, there is the negative because there's now an expectation of it, if that's the right word to use, because now we've had these conversations, as you've explained, and people want to know, is this going to come into fruition? And as we all talk about the things that have happened in the community, as we talk about TIF, the Northeast Renaissance TIF, as we talk about how we want it to be successful, and we have these types of projects, and we have other projects that we want to incorporate on board, it gets mixed up in the conversation of what's, what's being successful as far as a project, and those projects that are at a disadvantage when it comes to some of the things that they're trying to do. So with that, I'm going to ask that we allow this to be introduced, and I have asked Ms. Bridges to continue to keep me continuously involved in the updates of what comes out of the OFA, and how we continue to engage the community, and also consider, when we're looking at some of our communities of Black and Brown descent, a lot of them are grandparents who are raising grandchildren. So that is where this conversation comes into play, where we're asking for that family setting of at least the senior over 50 being able to at least care for those grandbabies, that they are going to be in the household, and that could be because of many different circumstances, so that also is understandable. We have a lot of seniors who don't have children, or they leave children behind, or they want to be independent, so therefore, they don't want a mortgage, they don't want a payment, they just want to live. And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of those places, and there's a waitlist for at least two of them that I know of, that I've talked to seniors all across the city in the community of Ward 7, asking, is there a place for senior housing? So this, these types of projects are, in fact, being asked for in our community, so whether it is the Harmony Project, or another school, the Dunbar Project that is currently up, or any other project when it comes to senior housing, we're going to continue to accommodate our seniors because they are in their sunset years, so they should be very comfortable in what they want, and to have what their desired outcome is, if that's for them to have this type of housing, or if it's for them to live comfortably in the home that they own. Either way, they have an option, and that's what we're asking for with this. So thank you again, and again, I ask for this to be introduced.
May I ask a question, and I have a comment?
Sure.
What timeline are we looking at for the OFA?
Yes, OFA should have, will come out in, I believe, June or July with its determination of the funds and how they're going to be allocated. So we will know then whether we get the OFA funds. Hopefully, we've got the private financing to finalize, the tax credits, things like that to finalize, but I, I think that it is ambitious but realistic to say that hopefully by the end of the year, we would be able to get on site and start breaking ground of some sort, preparing ground.
And then, listening to the presentation, which by the way, I think commendable to approach such a project like this, what plans do you all have, I know this is early in the process, but what plans do you all have around this development to speak to the history of Marcus Garvey? That, that, I'm just kind of curious what was on your mind with that?
Nothing has been finalized with regards to that. The apartments themselves are named Harmony because that was the original name of the school, the Harmony Project, the Harmony School Project. But, you know, we've talked a little bit about making sure that there is some historical basis, or some, some historical acknowledgement of the school and what it was. There's a very interesting historic one, in doing, in getting our, getting this building designated as a historical site, there was a lot of research that went into it, and it's a fascinating read, and I'm hoping that there will be photographs that we'll be able to utilize, and other artifacts and things like that, which we would be able to utilize within the building itself. I don't know what they are at this time, I haven't checked into that, I don't know what, you know, what's available, but it is a fascinating story. One of the early schools, one of the first schools to desegregate in Oklahoma City, and it's just, it's got, it's got a great history, so I will hope that we will be able to capture that, and we'll ask for the community's support in maybe providing us with materials that can have a permanent home within the Harmony School Project in a museum-like setting.
Yeah, I just see such an opportunity here, um, because as you were talking, I was revisiting my Marcus Garvey history that I know from, uh, the PBS documentary that I'm watching with my college students in the Rivers Cross, and I just think there's such an opportunity from that past and present moment, because, you know, Marcus, from my understanding, and feel free to add anything, Councilperson's or Ms. Bridges, but my understanding, you know, he's, he's operating in that kind of 1919 moment where we don't have laws protecting Black and Brown folk from lynching, right?
Correct. That didn't happen until just this week.
I mean, I...
Last week, I guess.
Let it resonate, right?
Right.
And it strikes me if, in 1919, because it's so, the times were so perilous to be a Black body walking city streets anywhere in the South, but kind of even the country, that, um, this man thought he had to go back to Africa. Not just thought he had to go back, right, but tried to charter a, a ship to go back.
Right. That's correct.
And then, two years later, here in Oklahoma, we'll get the Tulsa Race Massacre, right, where Black and Brown people made a way out of nowhere and saw generational wealth starting to amass that they could pass down, and then it's bombed to heck and back, right, and gone. And, and because of that moment, we don't get, we don't get to see that opportunity for Black folk to pass down generational wealth the way we've seen it maybe in other community, in other communities. So, this man feels he has to go. There is no place for him in this country. And because of the gentrification fears and anxieties that are present right now, I think this is an opportunity to be able to say in this present moment that we are creating something so that people do not leave. They are not forced to leave a part of town that has now historical resonance, and I think there's something in Marcus's story that allows for the past to become prologue and to speak to this present moment of avoiding displacement and instead building from the ground up for the people who are there. I mean, to be able to walk from this development around the corner to Florentism.
Mm-hmm.
Or with the upcoming BRT that we passed and Maps for, to have, to be that close to a transit line, to have a pharmacy right next door. I just think this is really, I just see an opportunity here, and I would really encourage you all in the community to weave in Marcus's story so that people around there see it. And then, I don't know all the history of the school, but to weave that into there as well, but to really, I think it would, it would kind of go a long way to speak to the displacement concerns, um, that I definitely have, not just with this, but just in general.
Yeah, and I, I definitely agree with that, and I think even with the Marcus Garvey name connecting it to that Leadership Academy, because there were quite a few young people that came through that Leadership Academy, uh, when it was established as a Leadership Academy, and, uh, Dr. McPherson was very intentional by taking those young people to Africa every summer. Um, so, I, I definitely agree with that, and, you know, we're all fearful of what gentrification has brought and what it will continue to do. We're all fearful of that, but until we, as a community, understand our empowerment for ourselves, we're going to allow, yes, us, uh, until we, uh, understand our empowerment for ourselves, um, and, and are educating ourselves about what, what this, what has happened, what took place, and, and how we move forward, um, for ourselves and our community, we're going to continue to be fearful of, of what that word is. Um, and projects like this, in my opinion, um, should spur the self-gentrify conversation of your communities. Um, and to continue, again, when I talked about those seniors, to be able to house themselves in these places, not leaving, if they want to sell, they can sell their homes maybe to someone who definitely wants to invest in the community that looks like them and maybe benefit from what this can bring. But I definitely agree, uh, as far as Marcus Garvey and what he stood for, that name should also be resonated within this project because, um, he wanted to bring harmony when it came to African-Americans and being able to go back to where they came from, so they could receive the harmony that they once knew from the land that they came from. So, I think we all definitely understand that, but I, I definitely agree that that should be a conversation, and that, that can also be a community conversation when it comes to the intricate details of what this looks like, uh, when it comes to the development. But I would, uh, add what he said, instead of a coffee shop and instead of a, a sandwich shop, a pharmacy would be perfect.
Okay. Thank you for that. I, I appreciate that. That's something that we'll definitely take into consideration here. Um, thank you too. I, I, I agree with you. I think that, first of all, history is so important. Um, it's been bastardized, it's been changed, it's been ignored, uh, for, for far too long, and I think that history is important. The facts are important. The truth is important, um, and we don't see that a lot today. So, I'm hoping that, uh, what we're doing here will make a difference in terms of at least bringing that piece of history back and bringing it forward into the future so that there is a connection between our past, our present, and our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So, Councilwoman Nice, your previous comment, uh, you want to make that a motion to introduce it? Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Councilwoman Hammond.
Oh, I think you're... I'm sorry.
All right. Passes unanimously, set for public hearing and final consideration on March 17th. We'll move on to 9N. This is a resolution to be introduced and set for public hearing and final consideration on March 17th, approving an allocation, uh, $5.9 million for the Myriad Gardens Crystal Bridge and other improvements, and I believe there's a presentation.
Yes. Maureen Heffernan, the Executive Director for Myriad Gardens Foundation, is here to give us a presentation on the project.
Oh, thank you. Good morning. Well, I'm here today to, um, hopefully receive approval for TIFF and some city funding so we can renovate the Crystal Bridge Conservatory. I think the Crystal Bridge is probably the most iconic structure in the downtown. It's a jewel. It's gotten a little tarnished over the years. It needs some polishing up, and that's what I'd like to, uh, explain today. Almost 32 years ago, on March 25th, 1988, the Crystal Bridge was opened, uh, had its grand opening, and actually, Mr. Tolbert is here in the audience, who was a key part of that project to, uh, do all the heavy lifting to make this, this possible. But the Crystal Bridge was actually built a couple of years, or it started before 1988, so it is almost 35 years old, which is a whole generation, and, uh, the, the next generation, we need the next generation of improvements. So, this is a view of it when it opened, and it looks pretty much the same today, and that's one of the, the key reasons we really need to rejuvenate it, renovate it, make it a much more attractive structure and destination for downtown. Um, when all of the Devon TIFF funds were, uh, it helped renovate the exterior of the grounds almost nine years ago, now the big missing piece to make the Myriad Gardens a truly, truly world-class destination, um, is needed to get the Crystal Bridge now, uh, renovated as well. So, the key reasons why we need to renovate is the interior aging infrastructure. You'll see some pictures in a minute about why that needs to be addressed. We have to improve the aesthetic and the educational visitor experience. We have to remain competitive in the world of museums and attractions to have the most up-to-date, um, everything from the finishes to the educational experiences for guests and, and students. We want to, uh, seriously enhance the accessibility for seniors and special needs visitors, which at this time really leaves a lot to be desired in the Crystal Bridge experience for those groups. And we also want to increase the number of visitors, the number of members, and earned revenue so we can be financially stable for the long term, and again, that will hopefully reduce the city's need in, in our annual funding as well. So, those are all the key reasons why this is a really important time to do that. So, with that in mind, we developed a two-phase, uh, project to renovate the entire Crystal Bridge complex from north to south, and we completed Phase One about a year and a half ago, uh, the south lobby and adding a classroom. That's on the, the right to the screen there. And now, Phase Two is to renovate the interior of the Crystal Bridge and our north lobby. So, this is the lobby that was renovated, and it's, it's just a beautiful lobby. It's great for education, art shows, visitor information. It's helped us do even more rentals in that space. This is the classroom that we use a lot for all of our education programs. John Rex also uses it, and this is the new entrance into the Crystal Bridge, which is vastly improved. You used to enter under a dark concrete tunnel. So, these are all the improvements that we've done, and that has all been done by private funding. This is the bridge, and it really is a glorious, beautiful destination. The plants have never looked better inside, but the infrastructure really needs to be changed and, and enhanced. The Crystal Bridge has two main parts, a dry desert section where we display beautiful peck dye and aloes and, and succulents, and then the main part of it is the, uh, rainforest part of it, and there are incredible species. It's, it's absolutely fascinating when you walk through to see the collection that we've amassed over the years. It's really quite wonderful. In schools, kids get to discover chocolate and avocados and mango and bananas and coconuts, and it's, it's a fabulous experience for all visitors. But here's the problem. As you can see, uh, the steps here, they not only look bad, but they weren't really designed well as an aesthetic experience to show off this beautiful waterfall. It gets a little wet through there, a little dicey underfoot. Um, you can see the outdated staircases there. They really need to be improved, brought up to date. The old wooden bridges are really kind, they're rotting, they're, they have a lot of, um, humidity issues in there because it's hot, there's a lot of water, so things deteriorate. So, we need to really spruce that up. We fondly calls this, we call this the Bridge to Nowhere. We had to block an entrance when our new entrance was built, so you can see the need to enhance this. This, you can see the elevator. This goes up to the third level, and it's rusting, and when people in wheelchairs get out from there, the surface is uneven. Uh, this is to get to the Skywalk, the Skybridge. So, it's not only aging in, uh, infrastructure, but it, it, it just doesn't look good. It really needs to be modernized and updated and fresh. We've made a few paths into some of the beds so people could see the, the plantings more clearly, but a, um, a mulch path is not a world-class path for, uh, a structure such as this. The old tunnels that led to the north lobby, again, not very attractive. These are a little dark. It's hard to see, but again, it just shows some more of the infrastructure issues that we, we have to improve. Some of the areas were never really designed well in hindsight to show off plants. You can see how narrow some of these planting beds are to show off all of our collections of, uh, cactus. This is, uh, this is a room on the second level that you'll see from, uh, it, it faces the Devon, our north plaza. We call it the Oculus Room, and it's just a big concrete bunker-type room right now. And we have plans, you'll see in a moment, to make this, uh, a really interesting space for, for visitors. So, this really needs to be improved and better used. We have some of these stairs and concrete areas leading to different parts, which really needs to be rethought for more efficiency and storage and a, and a much better visitor experience, and this is one of the most important reasons. This is under, uh, we have two mountains, we call them, on the, the wet side and the dry side, and they're, they're literally coming apart. It doesn't pose a safety issue, issue right now for people visiting. I don't want them to think it's not safe, but it really needs to be addressed, and we have an opportunity to renovate as, as a result of having to do this work. This is our north lobby. You can see the old, old mural still there, looking very dated. This is really a underused space, which is too valuable to leave, uh, unrenovated and brought up to a better and higher use. So, those are all the things wrong with it, but this is the most exciting part because, uh, the south, just the south of Myriad Gardens, as you know, there's the new park, there's the convention center, the hotel, and all the other developments in the downtown. So, people coming into the gardens, we want to match that experience, um, when they come into the Crystal Bridge. So, we've been planning on this for some years now to make it a much better experience. So, we've been working with a top-flight group of architects and designers, museum visitor specialists, and these are still some draft plans, but you can see a much more immersive, interesting experience. This is a new path layout. It could look like with, with new water features, a reconstructed waterfall, um, so it would look much more up-to-date and polished and beautiful, um, more interactive, new, new paving, new finishes throughout. It would really look fresh and beautiful. This is Longwood Gardens, and we plan to have more ways to plant in colors and flowers, um, throughout this, the year. So, we give people a reason to come back several times a year, not just once I've seen it and I don't, I don't feel the need to go back. We want to add sculptures. We want to add vines, so it really becomes this layered experience, and we want people who are residents of the city to bring their friends and family when they visit. We want all the out-of-town people to visit it. This is New York Botanical Garden, so you could see a bridge like that is much more beautiful than what we currently have. We'd like to add another water feature of some kind with large lilies on it, which are really fascinating and, uh, unique. Um, freshen it up. This is a, a conservatory that was recently built in Omaha, Nebraska, so you can see the new finishes, the brightness, water features, all of those things we can do. We also want to have a very strong, strongly improved educational aspect during your visit with signage and interactive exhibits, um, plant morphology, functions, plant adaptations, people, plants, conservation and climate change. We want to address all these in really interesting ways when people visit. Build in exhibits like this throughout the ground floor and second level where they're hands-on, and they can really learn some powerful, uh, botanical lessons there. We will have some carts such as this, where school field trips would be using these, the general public would be using these. We'd like to build a terrace up on a second level where people could, it would be a beautiful place to sit and just enjoy the views of that space. It's also a space where we could have rentals to increase our earned revenue, uh, increase the interest of the Skywalk. It's a beautiful experience to walk on that. We want to make it even more so. This is that old Oculus Room. We want to put some seedling benches in there, some quotes, some lighting effects, maybe even sound of the rainforest, and you could, uh, rest there, take a break, enjoy the views in that space. And we would like to add a gift shop. Everybody, um, our visitors ask, where's the gift shop? And so, it's not only a great experience for visitors, it's extra income for us. So, we want to add a gift shop that looks, has the same finishes, um, as our south lobby. And again, we have a great design team to make all this happen in a really quality way. So, the budget for this is about $8.6 million, and with the, the Devon TIFF funds today and the extra city allocation, we would be supplying the balance of that $8.6 with privately raised funds to make this happen. And when we do, we've projected, and I think, I hope these are conservative numbers, we really don't want to raise the price of admission that we currently have, uh, but we feel in the first year with the new attraction, we could probably get at least a 25% increase in visitors. That might level off after new things open. There's still increase, they level off slightly. So, you can see that between the different, um, adding a gift shop, having more memberships, visitors and so on, increased rentals, we think that we could have at least a $200,000 to $250,000 increase in our gross revenue, which again helps us, uh, offset what the city is paying to, uh, help us operate Myriad Gardens. So, that is our request today, and we just want to sincerely thank you for your continued support of the gardens, because the gardens really do add so much to the downtown and the quality of people's lives, so this will just really enhance it and make it strong for the next generation of Oklahoma City residents. Thank you. You have any questions?
Any questions? I guess the only question I'd have is the timeline for completion. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, if the funds are approved, we could be hopefully removing plants as early as this December. It would take about a year, so the Crystal Bridge would be closed most of 2021, and then we would reopen, and the timing just happened to work out pretty much on the anniversary of the opening, which would be March 25th in 2022. And that would coincide beautifully with the convention center and the hotel opening and all of that, to take advantage of, of that. So, the Crystal Bridge will be closed for about a year to make all of this happen.
Well, we have a citizen who signed up to speak on this item, Michael Washington.
Thank you.
Don't anybody panic. I like what I've heard. Pretty much myself haven't visited much downtown with respect to the gardens or what have you, maybe twice. And the times I did visit, it was all right. I mean, because like I said, I'm really not a garden-type guy, but I mean, there are a lot of other families who are. And because of that fact, I've noticed that, you know, you've had each year, you can't help but notice when you drive it by, especially during summer events or what have you, that a lot of people converge downtown. And from what I've seen, especially what got me was that the elevator being in a decrepit, almost like a probably deteriorating state. And then the sidewalks or whatever she's talking about wasn't accessible as what may have been planned to be in to look out for. So again, this is in Ward 6. I'm really stepping out of my lane. I usually stay in Ward 7. But again, because of that, it's an interesting topic to me. And I do believe with the closing of it and refurbishing it, that it could be something great. I may start going back to it, you know, like I say, well, most time I'm here, I usually go to maybe the library, the courts here. You know, I really don't pay much attention to the garden part here. But again, I think it's nature because especially me being a country boy. I love flowers, trees, smell of fresh air, you know. So in that respect, ma'am, I think it's a good idea here. So I just wanted to say that. And maybe now you can all breathe a sigh of relief. I'm not going against it. So thank you all very much for this opportunity to speak. And again, ma'am, I think, and what you are willing to put, you know, your private funds in the middle of it, we definitely don't want to see the fees to be raised with respect to what I just saw on the screen there. And again, you know, I think it's a great deal. So again, y'all, thank y'all for this opportunity to speak and great idea, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask?
Councilman Tippett.
What if any plans exist to better connect the Myriad Gardens to Scissor Tail Park?
You mean with the property that's in between?
Mm-hmm.
So that's privately owned property?
Mm-hmm.
Now, there is, there is connection there with, what's the street that's there? Harvey. It's a connection there, and right now, that's a public street, you know, it can be, it's really kept as a public street. We have it closed currently. We have that access, at the very least, for pedestrian access. And, but it's private property to be developed.
It's, when she raised the 25th anniversary, this reminded me when I read Lack Myers' book, OKC Second Time Around, and I found myself, like, very surprisingly moved by the opening of the gardens because it was one of the few things, right, that actually comes out of urban renewal. And the plan was to have this big giant, you know, downtown gardens representing what, or reflecting what's over there in Copenhagen. And I just see the potential with Scissor Tail and Myriad Gardens together, just being able to purge a little bit. That's just very much on my mind as you all are doing these renovations. I was just curious what the process looks like.
I appreciate the vision of the foundation too and what they're doing because, you know, this is, this is a city facility. It's a city-owned facility, and it's our responsibility, we have an investment for maintaining it as well as helping, working with them to keep it fresh as far as from an event standpoint. So having the ability to do that with these funding sources is a benefit, but also combined with the private investment from the foundation is also a big help to the project.
All right. Well, I mean, I'll add my comments to everybody else's. This is a very special place in our city, very unique. And I'm certainly grateful for Mr. Tolbert, who's here today, who's been at this. We had talked in the last week or so about, I found an old article. He was the head of Mayor Coats's committee to turn around the city, you know, back in the 80s. He's been at this work for a very long time. So very grateful for you and Maureen and the whole team over there. Today is, what is in front of us today is potential introduction of the resolution. Would someone like to make that motion?
No move.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, set for public hearing and final consideration on March 17. Item 901 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Lieutenant David Tucker while he continues to require rehabilitation. Don't believe we need executive session. Is there a motion? Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9P is an executive session to receive communications regarding Knutson v. City of OKC. We would handle this at the end of our other business, but we could take the vote now to go into executive session. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Similarly, item 9Q is an executive session to receive communications regarding the case, Wondick v. City of OKC. We'll handle this at the end of our other business, but we can have the vote now to go into executive session. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. R1 is claims recommended for denial. We have items A through D, and it appears someone has signed up to speak on item 9R1B, and that is Johnny Douglas. If you wouldn't mind stating your name, address, and limit your remarks to three minutes.
Good morning, council. My name is Johnny Douglas. My address is 8320 Prairie Ridge Road, Oklahoma City, 73135. I'm asking that my claim be honored for California King size mattress that was destroyed by the Oklahoma City Police Department.
Okay. We might need a little more detail on, do we have someone here to describe what happened?
The Oklahoma City Police Department came out on, with a warrant to get bed sheets, computers, searching for hairs, secretions, blood, whatever. And they cut the top of the mattress off, exposing it to just springs for me to lay on. And I never was charged with anything. And I just need my mattress replaced.
Can you comment to this?
Yes. The basis of this claim is a search warrant that was executed by the Oklahoma City Police Department on August 22nd of 2018. And this investigation was pursuant to an allegation of rape or sexual assault that happened earlier that year. The search was conducted on August 23rd of 2018. And in the process, a portion of Mr. Douglas's mattress was seized. And it was done pursuant to the search warrant, which authorized the police to collect samples of the mattress, including samples that had bloodstains or bodily fluids on it. The claim was filed on December 30th of 2019, so more than a year had passed. Now, here's what the law says on regard to the issue. In the Governmental Tort Claims Act, all claims must be filed within one year of the date of loss or they are barred. Furthermore, the city is exempt from any loss that's occurred during the execution of a lawful court order. And this search warrant was executed by an Oklahoma County District Judge. So that's why it's recommended for denial.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I have a question. How long did it take for this case to be cleared?
By that, do you mean for him to?
For charges to be dismissed, dropped, or whatever the case may be?
I don't know. That would have been a decision made by the district attorney's office.
Mr. Douglas, thanks for, first off, thanks for coming down here and thanks for your patience and waiting to be heard. Can I ask you a question in why it would have taken you over a year to file your claim?
Well, the reason why it took so long, I never was charged. I'm waiting to see what they're gonna do. I didn't want to file a claim, and there was still business to be taken care of. So after that length of time, I knew, you know, time would run out. So I said, well, I better file a claim to get my mattress replaced so I won't have to be sleeping on springs.
Just to clarify what little I know of criminal law, I mean, just because if charges haven't been filed to date, the only time at which that runs its course would be when the statute of limitations is-
That's correct.
Has that occurred from the time of the alleged crime?
I really don't know.
It's not believed that statute of limitations on the type of charge that was being presented would have run. Not trying to get into the details of the charge or the specifics of the allegation, it is not believed that the time has charged. Now, what we don't know is if the DA has already declined to accept charges. That is a decision of the DA, not of the City of Oklahoma City. By state law, the claim is barred because he has not filed it within one year.
Right, right now. It was more of a curiosity. I know it's not legally relevant, but, okay. All right. Well, thank you. I guess we'll take it from here. We have these four items that are recommended for denial. What does the council wish to do with them?
May I, may I ask, with that being state law, what is that like in terms of what the council can do if the state law says the statute of limitations is done? Can council, what action can they take if any?
Well, if council was to recommend this for approval, it would be contrary to state law. So the potential for liability of the council would be at issue. The state law does explicitly state they must file within one year or they are barred.
Thank you.
What is the notification process when it comes to people being notified that they have the right to make this claim in the amount of time?
Well, there isn't a prescribed notification process. However, in this situation, the city would also have an exemption because the police were authorized by the search warrant to execute this. And there is specific language that if the state or one of the municipalities is acting under that authorization, then we would not be liable for those police acts. The police went out under the pursuit to the search warrant, which was for his home, to collect evidence of bodily fluids that would be related to sexual assault. And they did that. They followed through with what the court ordered and allowed.
Okay. Do we have any motions? We have four claims in front of you.
I guess I just want to make a comment real quick. I understand that we're really kind of locked in by law on this thing. I do find it troubling, though, to some extent, to think that you could be innocent and come in and have your personal property damaged with no recourse. I kind of hate it that we're locked in on it state-law wise, but I don't know what the alternative is. Or if there is one.
And I'm curious if there, if we can execute some type of notification process to, to those who, when we have to subpoena anything from their home, that they understand if they believe their property has been damaged, they have this amount of time to respond. Is that possible? Do we do that, or is that something we can do?
We can have that discussion with city personnel and review that option.
All right. We actually have someone who has just signed up to speak on this item. Michael Washington.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of this horseshoe, obviously you all have misinterpreted the law that applies to this situation. Number one, there is nothing in the Governmental Tort Claims Act, which is a mirror of the Federal Tort Claims Act, that prevents a person from being compensated for violations of their private as well as civil rights in respect to their properties or false imprisonment or whatever the cases may be. Now then, you first of all have to go by the late and last time in which charges were filed, even if they weren't filed. Now then, this man has a legitimate expectation to be given due process of law here. Number one. Regardless of, I missed it, I don't know, like I said, when the time actually expired when him to file his tort claim. Now, we know for the most part, tort claims only come into, it begins to toll upon a person being once of all found not guilty, or if there's finalization that nothing will be filed. And that has to come from the district attorney and say, okay, sir, we're not gonna file anything. Boom. That's when the government of tort claim one year starts. Now then, simply because he already stated that there has nothing been finalized on this yet, it's still in open season here. So in and of itself, you cannot say and justify that, and as a matter of fact, regardless of what the law says, the law allows you to be lenient here. Because it doesn't say, say you cannot give this man compensation for this flagrant disregard of this man's right. We're gonna cut up your mattress. Oh, well, so what, sir? Buy you another one. As a matter of fact, we're gonna come and knock your window out, buy you another one. That's not how this law works here. That's totalitarian Milwaukee here. Draconian crap here. That's what this is. You know, kind of where this man got to take this here. And as a matter, I hate that he left because I feel free to file a lawsuit on his behalf. That's what I do for him. I'm a hater that he left on me. That's why I was looking for him. Anyhow, that's right. You got a guy that loves filing lawsuits, don't care who like it. And I'm not gonna bow down to anybody. I'm gonna stand firmly on mine, on my foundation. I stand on my square. Now, this man here has a right to be compensated for this violation of his private rights. If nothing was done, and I'm gonna destroy your case and I didn't file charges on you now that district attorney is not using, then he needs to be compensated for it. He needs to be compensated for it. Any one of you would want the same thing to happen to you if you were in this situation. You can't use a two months extended failure to file a government tort claim. That's not how the law works. As a matter of fact, he still has a right under the federal civil law and federal U.S. 42 U.S.C. Section 1983 to file his federal claim. And as a matter of fact, under 42 U.S.C. Section 1983, you don't have to file a tort claim. See, tort claims are merely just something that's on the state level. Okay? I hate that they left, like I can show them on that as well. Now then, let me say this. In turn, this man needs to be given due process. He needs to be given equal protection of the law. He needs to be given recognition as citizens of the Fourth Amendment right. They have a right to not be discredited or disregarded in any claim because of a state entity. Okay? This is an important issue here because it could happen to one of us next. And I ask that you people consider this here. Don't be stinging this man. This man had property taken from him, and you people do not have to follow the government of tort claims act. Now, you ready, I'm getting ready to close because he didn't say-
You're talking here in three minutes. You're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're, okay. So we've got a motion to deny the claims. Do we have a second?
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I understand what the state law says. I do understand that. I also, I'm curious what our options are until, A, I haven't seen, this is what I'm hearing of this case, I've not seen the condition of this particular item that is up for this mattress here. I don't know what was done to it. I don't know what was reasonable in that moment. And I don't know what the guilt of this person, and we don't know the guilt of this person. This is a very serious charge and a very serious crime. And if this person, if this person is innocent, then I have questions about damage to property and what that, I do. I, I'm literally kind of neutral on this because until it works its way through the criminal justice system, I don't know exactly what to say.
So one thing to note is that this is the claims process. The Governmental Tort Claims Acts provide that they have to file the claim with one year or they're barred. It does not prohibit this person from going forward to file a lawsuit in state court. They have 180 days to do so. And I did tell him that before this meeting, when I met with him, I did discuss that this is the process. If it is denied, he does have that remedy to go forward and file a state law claim. The city would present its defenses in that position. In terms of the damage to the mattress, there were 11 stains on the top of the mattress. And so the top of the mattress was cut off to take into evidence for the consideration of the investigation of the crime. From that point forward, it is used as part of the evidence of the case. And in that situation, whether or not that's been presented to the DA or if the DA has asked for more information or they continue to investigate it, that's not something I have that information at this time.
We've informed him of what recourse he has?
Yes, sir.
Well, there's a motion pending. Is there a second? I'll second it. Yes. Okay. So we have a motion in a second to deny, I presume, all four claims. That's the motion, councilman? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. 10A1, claims recommended for approval. I do not believe we need executive session. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under these claims? Seeing none, entertain a motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11, items from council. We'll handle the business first. We'll start with item A, resolution appointing Jason Glidewell as municipal judge. Would you like to handle this? Chairman of the Judiciary Committee, Councilman Stonecifer.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a resolution today appointing Jason Glidewell as our newest municipal judge, effective May 26th, and on behalf of the Judiciary Committee and the council- effective May 26th, and on behalf of the Judiciary Committee and the council. I thought, this is the first time this process has been run through since Pete White left the horseshoe, and so I thought that the process went well. I thought it worked smoothly and effectively, and I would be remiss if I did not thank Kenny Jordan, Cindy Richard, LaShawn Thompson, and Galen Keaton for all of their great help to make this process run so smoothly. So, at this time, I'd move that the resolution be adopted.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to 11B. This is an ordinance to be introduced for public hearing March 17th and final hearing on April 14th relating to zoning and planning code, I believe specifically relates to small cell towers, and it is being introduced by Councilwoman Nice, so I'll turn it over to you.
This is obviously something that came before us before, during council meetings, when it, during the zoning process, and due to one of those towers that were in the ward, I wanted us to have a further conversation, and for this to really, in my opinion, go to a different entity in order to make these special exceptions and accommodations instead of us as council members deciding on these small and special towers. So, with that, I ask that we move for it to be introduced.
I'm sorry, did you make a motion to introduce it? We've got a motion and a second to introduce it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we'll go around the horseshoe. We'll start at, how about eight?
Thank you. I have a couple things as we were talking today. I think it's, we've experienced a couple of, in my opinion, firsts for some of us on the horseshoe when it comes to certain claims and torts and different things like that, so obviously that is a concern when it comes to our residents and their personal property in some aspects. But I also want to make mention, as we went through quite, at least three zoning requests for marijuana, I would like to see something done about us approving these types of growing sites, what the regulations could be. There have been implications across our state and different municipalities to prevent them from being able to do all the things that they're doing, especially in spuds and puds, and I think it is far past time for us as a city to have this conversation as well, especially with the residents that I have for an upcoming zoning case that's in the Jones area, and I understand why they are fearful of what is to come in their community. I totally get it, and it's unfortunate that there are no protections in place currently for what that is. So, I hope we will look into doing that, and also, as we look into that, I know I've had the conversation with a couple council members and our mayor, but I would like to also execute us creating and establishing an African-American historic commission for our city as we move forward with the historic projects and preserving historic places of African-American reference in our community, and even as we talk about the Harmony School and those types of references when it comes to African-American history. We talked about, the last meeting, I talked about my pastor that passed away, Dr. James H. Tucker, and I didn't realize, I don't know why, but I guess because it's something that I attended and I knew, I just already knew the history, but in 2009, on March 23rd, our city council designated the street of 28th Street, it's either 28th or 29th, J.H. Tucker Lane, and that made me inquire and think, I would like to work with mayor to see if we can now deem March 23rd, Dr. J.H. Tucker Day in Oklahoma City. And the reason I ask that in reference to that is to his history, and a lot of us know Pastor Reed, and Pastor Reed had up in, he spoke Saturday about Dr. Tucker, Reverend Tucker, and said, he and Reverend Tucker were the longest-tenured pastors in our community. Reverend Tucker had been pastoring for over 47 years before he retired and just passing away in his early 80s, just a few days before in February. So, I'd like to see if we could do that, just as a memorial and a remembrance of Reverend Tucker and his legacy, and just that piece of history being now a legacy for our community. Some other things that I wanted to discuss are Oklahoma City Housing Authority. There's a project that they have presented in front of us at our council meeting before about redeveloping an area on MLK, and I understand there's a request for, there's either RFQ or RFP or requests for interest as far as this project is concerned, and I want to ensure, and as we talked about, these projects that are coming into fruition, that we are intentional about who's going to be a part of that process, equitable process, making sure that people understand and know that this is on the books as far as for people to respond, and I believe, and I was told that we have until this Friday for those who may have interest in this project. We also have the Ward 7 Breakfast that we had on Black History Month for February 22nd. I want to thank the ICN Center for hosting the community for that, and I also want to thank Mr. Al Dow, he's the son of the first elected African-American councilman, Dr. Dow, and he talked about the legacy of his father, and he even talked about how they marked and staked the area where Ralph Ellison Library sits in the late 60s for us to have the library, a metropolitan library, then to be named after the man himself, Mr. Ralph Ellison. And there's also a museum for you that's happening at the Science Museum this Saturday for our community. If you live in northeast Oklahoma City, you are asked to be a part of that. It's free for, free day for everybody to come if you are a resident of northeast Oklahoma City, or if you just want to come and be a part, we want you to come as well. And I've been told about that there are plenty of jobs for our community as far as part-time and just availability with the Shiloh Camp. They need some teens to be engaged with their camp this summer. Boathouse District, over, well over 100 jobs for our teens, and as well as the zoo, they have over at least 40 to 60 part-time jobs available, so I say that in mind for our community to realize and understand the importance of that. It's Women's History Month, so we salute all the ladies, and because we know women make the world go round. And this History Month, the theme is Valiant Women of the Vote, and I bring that up because this talks about the brave women who fought to win suffrage rights, and I think of women in Oklahoma who were first, and the women who were first for our state include the first African-American women that were elected to Senate by the name of Maxine Horner and Judge Vicky Miles LaGrange. They were both elected the same year for our Senate. We also had Hannah Atkins Diggs in 1968. She was the first African-American woman elected to the House of Representatives. We have Juanita Kidd Stout. A lot of us may not know her, but she was the first African-American woman to serve in a state Supreme Court for our state. And I know we talk about the Ada Loa Cipio Fisher. We also talk about Nanty Randolph Davis. We also talk about Claire Luper and their accomplishments as women in our state as well as our cities, but I think it's very important for us to also remember those ladies who have been unsung heroes and continue to be those unsung heroes in our communities. And a lot of you may not know, I remembered this detail, but I wanted to write it down and remember to speak about it. Leela Foley, she became the first black woman elected to mayorship in the United States, and that was in 1973, and she represented the town of Taft, all-black town of Taft, Oklahoma. So, Oklahoma is the home to the first African-American woman elected to mayorship in the United States, so I think that's history in itself for us to continue to speak about. And obviously, I talk about the woman who paved the way for me to be in this space, and that is Ms. Willa Johnson, being elected as the first African-American to serve our city council since its incorporation in 1890, being elected in 1993. So, that's obviously a reason to celebrate African-American women, and I say that to also say, in the words of Shirley Chisholm, "If they don't bring you, if they don't, if there's not a seat at the table, bring a folding chair." And the reason I say that is because African-American women have paved the way, even when it came to suffrage and the things that we were told we could not be a part of. When it came to the parade that happened in New York, African-American women were told to go to the back of the parade, and you can participate, but you have to go to the back. And women like Ida B. Wells said, "No, we're women just like you. We will stand and we will be with you through this process." So, again, I think it's important for us to be intentional about the table that's in front of us. We have to make sure and ensure African-American women are at that table and that there is diversity at that table before we even consider bringing a bigger table to the forefront. If we don't have a table that is collective of the people or reflect the city, reflect the community, though, I don't think we should consider ever bringing a bigger table to the people. So, just a couple more things. Deep Deuce, they had a tour, and I want to thank the Urban Lead Young Professionals for having that tour on Saturday. I missed that because I was celebrating the birthday, 100th birthday of Major Leverett from the Fire Department, his grandmother, Ms. Camilla Brown. So, we have a centenarian who is a lifetime resident of Ward 7, and it was a joy to participate and see her. By the time she got in the car, she was pooped out, so she was ready to go and take her nap, so I understand that. And also, I want to send thoughts to our young people at Oakdale, the girls' basketball team, and I did talk to them about what's happening, and also to Harding, try to fret with what happened as far as their recruiter is concerned, and also other thoughts with Oklahoma Christian, because while they didn't have to respond in the way that they did, they immediately took action when it came to that recruiter, and obviously, they understand there are some things that need to be done in their purview when it comes to educating their students and the students educating them on diversity, inclusion, and equity. And also, got to speak to some of our parks folks, so shout out to Big One. He works in our Parks Department. He was also at the Oakdale game. They played at Millwood on Friday, played the girls, so we were support, Thursday, excuse me, so we were supporting the young ladies there. So, I'll have more Black History as far as Women's History Month is concerned at our next council meeting, but those are things, in my opinion, that we should never forget. Again, don't leave African-American women out of the conversation or off of the table. Thank you.
I just want to just talk a little bit about, in the last couple weeks, I got the chance to, I took the chance, I guess, to attend some of the homelessness task force meetings. The city staff has convened, and they have consultant analytic insight convened. I think it was close to nine or 10 meetings over a few weeks to specifically really dive into and bring more service providers to the table, people who've experienced homelessness to the table, to talk about specific areas of interest. So, I was able to attend the meetings around prevention, affordable housing, as well as policy and advocacy, but I know they also hosted meetings related to outreach, low-barrier shelter, coordinated case management, and transportation, among a few other topics. So, I want to thank our city staff for kind of coordinating all that. I know it was, it was a lot of people, a lot of herding cats of people and places, so just want to thank them for their efforts, and I do think that that process has been, the meetings I was able to attend were great conversation, really great ideas coming out of them, and I think will give us some really specific items and actions that we can take as a city. I also just want to encourage everyone, today is an election day, so go vote. All Embark, Fixed Route, Zone 1 Parrot Transit, and the streetcar are free all day, so even if you don't go vote, to take the bus, like go hop on the streetcar, go take a bus, it's free, and just want to thank our Embark staff for creating an easier opportunity for people to get to their polling place, so thanks so much.
Saturday night, had the opportunity with my wife to go visit, participate in the annual Fireman's Award banquet out at the New Embassy Suites Hotel. It was a very stimulating evening, some great bravery and loyalty displayed by our firefighters. We owe them a great gratitude, and to the chief for putting that on. It's always a great event. Thank you, Your Honor.
First, I just wanted to say thank you to Creative Mornings for hosting me a couple weeks ago to talk about the importance of investing in community and education. That was really fun. I really appreciate them and everyone who attended. I also wanted to say, Ward 2, we got to play host to actor Ashley Judd pretty recently. She was here campaigning on behalf of U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren, and Ward 2's just been home to a lot of presidential hopefuls this last year, and it's been really cool to see people actually take seriously the vote in Oklahoma, that they would come and campaign here, and specifically to come to Ward 2, so that's been, that's been very cool. Also, I got to meet Don Katz, who was the founder of Audible. We had the Ralph Ellison Foundation Gala Saturday evening, and I just want to say thank you for his attendance, but I also want to say to the dancers I saw that night who performed there and brought Ellison's words to life and really made us reflect on where we are as a people, how far we've come and where we're heading, so that's all. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to item 12, city manager reports.
Yes, so we have an item that's on here, and item A is presentation of city council priorities on promoting a safe and secure and thriving, promoting safe, secure, and thriving neighborhoods, and we have four departments that are scheduled to present. What we're going to do is do police and fire today. We have planning and development services. We're going to move that to the next meeting just because of the time, and we still have an executive session to go, so we'll go ahead and do police and fire today and start this off with Chief Gorley.
All right. Thank you, Chief Gorley, Police Department. What we're going to do today is we go through and we talk about promoting safe, secure, and thriving neighborhoods. We're going to take an approach that not only looks at crime, but how we interact with the community, because in order to have people that feel safe in their neighborhoods, we have to interact, and they have to feel, you know, that they can approach and talk to the police as well, so that's going to be part of the presentation today, too. The first slide we'll start off with is our crime comparisons with comparable cities. We're still waiting on the 2019 final results, and part of that, too, is the fact that we now have a new records management system that doesn't report in the UCR manner that we always are accustomed to, and so those numbers that we have have to be converted into UCR, and several other cities are dealing with that, too, so we won't have the final numbers on 2019 till the end of March. But as you can see, crime basically was, was pretty stable when it comes to crimes against persons until we got into 2017, and you started seeing a little bit of uptick. What's interesting about that, too, is we also submit our data to the Major City Chiefs Association that just covers the major cities groups, and it appears pretty much around the country, you're seeing an uptick in your larger cities. We took comparable cities to us that are, that are kind of in this region to compare to, and that's where you see the numbers there. And then you go into the property crimes. Again, in 2017, you started seeing an uptick there. Just to talk about both of these areas, some things that we're doing to help address that, we're changing the way that we respond to not only our violent crimes and crimes against persons, but property crimes as well. Just a few things that we've done recently. As it relates to property crimes, we've hired two new analysts. We're in the process of hiring those, but we started using our analysts to track some of these property crimes. For example, Larceny's of Autos, we're now putting out reports... For example, larcenies of autos, we're now putting out reports monthly on that, that, that show, and, and weekly, where vehicles are stolen, what types of vehicles are stolen, and where they're recovered. Then also, too, we're finding that a lot of these vehicles that are stolen have the keys in the ignition, so we've been trying to impart that to our citizens through social media. It's not just in the ignition now with the little key fobs that can be laying in the car somewhere, and, and that's allowing people to jump in these cars and drive off with them. So we're doing that, also taking an approach, changing our firearms evidence and the way we process that. ATF has been here with us, and they're working on a, a program with us to get our firearms evidence entered into the system a little bit quicker on all of these shootings that we have, so we can take the casings and other things and compare that to other evidence. And then we're also in the process right now of creating what we're calling a violent crime street team, and that team will respond to shootings and other violent crimes as they occur in the evening, assisting our investigators in running down leads and tracking down people, and hopefully not only have a faster response time to the initial incident, but allow us to track down persons that are involved in those a little bit quicker, too, bring in those, those witnesses or suspects as they're, as they're identified. Investigation clearance rates, again, this is only up to 2018, that's the most current that we have right now. We'll get the more current numbers towards the end of March. But what is, I think, significant in this is our clearance rates are above the national averages in every category. This has been pretty consistent over the last several years, and I think that's a testament to our investigators and what we're doing on the other side of these, and we're not just taking a call and moving on to the next one, we're, we're doing what we can to investigate the crimes and bring them to a closure. The numbers of residents citywide reporting they feel safe has been trending upward, and so we're hoping that that will continue, especially with some of the new initiatives that we're doing now, that, that will, will help not only solve those crimes, but help people feel safe in their neighborhoods. Part of that, too, is when people feeling safe, they have to feel like they're being treated fairly, so we continue our procedural justice, not just courses specifically related to that, but building it into everything we do, all of our training, all of our scenario-based training that we do. We want to make sure our officers are out there explaining why they're doing those things, you know, taking enforcement action, taking the time to explain to the citizens and, and helping them understand what's going on so that, again, they'll, they'll feel more like they're being treated just and fairly. Some initiatives that we have to help with this, continued de-escalation training, training on fair and impartial policing, which we're also working on, the, the bias-related training that we'll be doing annually. We're putting that together and including not only some, some Department of Justice-related facts that need to be in there, but we're also planning on including Oklahoma history that's specific to Oklahoma City as well. And we're hoping to have that completed within the next couple of months so that we can start rolling that out on an annual basis. Community outreach programs through meetings and overtime programs, mental health initiatives. CIT officers are going to have iPads to conduct telemedicine assessments. That's supposed to roll out this month. We're hopeful that that will all come into play. It's not just us, we have to work out some things with Department of Mental Health and some other things, but, but we're very hopeful that we'll get those rolled out and that, in turn, we're hoping will result in a reduction in the initial crisis assessment times. So just a slide here to show our community outreach events for 2019. We've broken it down by, by division and how many people attended these events, and you can see, we, we had a total of 34,952 people that attended several events throughout the city and all the different divisions over the last year. This is an area that we continue to really work on, because again, if we're going to have those relations in the community, this is what community policing is, is getting out and getting to know folks, addressing topics that are important to them. Each division sets up topics that they're going to do quarterly and, and puts out the word, and, and we have, we've had pretty good attendance at a lot of these meetings, and some of you have been at those, and I appreciate that and your support as well. Trauma-informed policing, this is continuing on, and then again, not just in the classes that we teach, but in, in the scenarios and things that we do, is helping officers understand that when we come out, there's usually trauma involved in how we relate to those individuals to make sure we're not making the situation worse. And things like Palomar, the Family Justice Center, the Care Center, YWCA, having those partnerships with those individuals so that beyond the initial event that we respond to, we're making sure that those families and victims are taken care of, and that's, that's what, what that's about, and the results and the effects that that can have on them. Handle With Care is, is another program that we're heavily involved in. We're starting to see more agencies around the country and around the state get on board with this. And again, this is just when officers encounter a child that's been exposed to trauma of any kind, the officers notify the child's school so that when those, that child arrives at school the next day, those counselors know that there's a need to check on that, that child and make sure they're okay. Again, this has been something that's really been growing, we're, we're really pleased with the results of this. And it's not just Oklahoma City schools, it's any public school system that's within the Oklahoma City limits. We send one email, and they help track the, where those child, where that child goes to school, and they'll get that information out, too. And again, we're seeing more school districts and more agencies come on board with this as well, so we're pretty excited about that. And then last, I think it's real important, if you want your community to feel safe, you have to take care of your police officers and your first responders that are responding to these events, and if they're going to be well taken care of, they're more likely to treat the community better, too. So just in the last two weeks, we got our consultant group here that is starting to evaluate our department programs, and we're trying to improve how we handle intervention for employees, most specifically when it comes to early intervention. We have a good chaplaincy program and a good peer support program, but we feel like a lot of times, we're responding to the crisis. We wait until the, we don't wait intentionally, but we wait until the officer needs something for them to come to us. And so we're trying to figure out better ways to identify those situations that put those officers under stress and identify those things ahead of time so that we can reach out to them and maybe prevent it from coming to that crisis point. So changes to these programs are going to result in more proactive identification of issues and deployment of resources when needed. We're very excited about that. This group that's coming in has, has already done some really good things and started interviewing several of our officers, and we feel like the feedback has been very good, and we've already identified a few things that we can be doing better, so we're excited about that as well. So with that, anybody have any questions?
Chief, please, first of all, pass along our appreciation from the whole council, I'm sure, for your community officers. They always do a very good job speaking at Homeowners Association and other meetings. In fact, they do a really good job, and they get more attention than we do when we go out and speak to those groups, so you might have them tone it down a little bit. But seriously, you know, what's interesting on those first couple of charts that you presented, so we had a spike where Oklahoma City had higher levels of crime in 14, well, not on this one, but on the next one, in 14, then again, in 18. And in the previous one, we're just seeing a, a steady kind of increase in 18. Do you get any feedback on a national basis when, especially on the second slide, when, when you see increases like this that kind of go up for a year or two and then come back down as to what creates that?
It's, it's real difficult to say, and when I, I go to major cities, it's probably when I, I gain the most insight and information, because I'm in a group of police chiefs of all, you know, the, the 75 major cities around the country, and, and it's interesting, we, we tend to talk about the same things. And a lot of it, you know, you, you look at manpower issues, cities are, the larger cities are growing, and not only that, the way they're growing has become a little bit different. You're seeing more of that urban-type growth rather than the, the suburb and the, you know, the residential kind of outlying areas. And so it's kind of shifting and changing your, your crime types. You get more people together in, in smaller areas, and sometimes you see some of those spikes occur, too. There's, there's still a lot of things going on, you know, with criminal justice reform. I think we're still kind of guiding and feeling our way through that. There's a lot of things that, that we've done to kind of start us in that right direction as far as adjusting the laws, but we haven't done a lot on the other side to address those individuals that we aren't putting in jail. What are we doing to get them services and keep them from reoffending? And I think everybody's still kind of feeling their way through that.
And another interesting, when you compare this with the chart that shows the citizen's level of sa, the feeling of safety, so we're at a high mark in 14 when our crime is up with respect to property crimes, and again, we're growing up despite the level of crime increasing as well. So it may be a delayed reaction or something, but just thought those were interesting.
It is, I thought the same thing, looking at that, it's very interesting.
Thank you.
... I haven't break that involved, so we had some comments speaking, and he gave wonderful tips, and the break was, he was the same person, and I got a text gesture, and as we can, I talked back, so I encourage H.O.A.'s to call us, invite us to come out and speak to issues that they're having, and I respect that.
And, and that was an excellent story there, because it, it did involve not only members of the community, but the officers themselves really put in a lot of time this weekend, once they identified that individual, in tracking that person down and actually catching him in the act, too. And I mean, it was, it's a very good story. They, they did a lot of good work on that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your time.
And Chief Kelly is going to give us a presentation on the fire department's role in addressing this priority.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager, Richard Kelly, Fire Chief. Once again, I would really appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about your fire department and how we can ensure that we have a safe and secure community with thriving neighborhoods. I think when we look at that from the perspective of safe and secure communities, one of the most important areas we look at is when our residents call 911, how fast we get there. So some of the things that we're really going to address upfront is talking about our response times and how quick we get there and what type of incidents we're responding to. So we're going to have several of these key measures right here that we're going to get into. This right here, you see a chart that is basically 11 years of history from FY10 to FY20. And if you look at that, you see from 10, 11, and 12, we had a marked increase there, and then you see that CAD-to-CAD implementation. That's the area where we was able to start looking at our medical response and fire data and CAD and putting that together, so when we responded, we could see both sides of that. What allowed us, what that allowed us to do was start looking at prioritizing our dispatch, because prior to that FY13, we responded on every incident that IMSA went on, and that really was not a good utilization of our resources. We want to make sure that we're out there responding to life-threatening calls. So we had, was able to implement medical priority dispatching, and basically what that allowed the medical dispatchers, when we got that call in, to look at that and say, what are the higher priority calls? There's an algorithm they go through, and then only send fire on life-threatening, and that is a good utilization of our resources, so we're responding to life-threatening calls, because prior to that, we were actually responding to maybe someone that had a headache for two weeks, a stomach ache. Not that that person may not feel that that's important to them, but it's not life-threatening. So we wanted to make sure a good utilization of resources there. So you can see that trend dropped down in FY13. Still, the percentages were about the same, a little bit different, but 70% of our calls are EMS-related calls. 25% are other, that would be elevator calls, where you have elevator emergency, automatic alarms, downed power lines, things like that. And then 4% to 5% is actually fire calls, and that might be structure fires, wildland urban interface fires, grass fires, car fires. That's the breakdown of percentages that you notice there in blue, red, and green. And then you've seen that marked decrease, and that's when we implemented medical priority dispatching. And through the years, we've started to see a gradual increase again back up to where actually this year, if we stay on target, we're going to see one of the largest increases of all, around 82,000 calls. So we continually monitor that medical priority dispatching, and we actually take out codes sometimes to remove those incidents that we still shouldn't be responding to. So it's a continuous process to make sure we're serving our residents in an effective manner and responding to life-threatening calls. The next one as we look at is our actual dispatch times. Now, this is very important for us, and there's two lines there. You see the red line, that is the fire department dispatch. When we get a call that is fire-related, that comes into the actual fire dispatchers, we have one minute or less to get that call out, and we do, and our goal in that is 90% of the time. And you notice when we start tracking that in FY13, we're only at 60%. This year, I'm happy to say, for the first time, we're on target to meet our goal, which is 90%. That is a national standard goal to get that out. The challenges that we've had over the years is we really didn't put that measure out in front of them. When we started showing them, this is the goal, and we show it to each individual dispatcher, this is what we're trying to achieve, it was really self-correcting. When they, when our personnel see what the goal is and that they're not meeting that, they want to do that. We also help them in different ways that they may not, you know, different ideas, some different ways of dispatching to help improve that. So we're really focused in that area. So I'm excited about that, that we're meeting that mark. The other one is the blue line. This is a little challenging because of creating the medical priority dispatching, all of that runs through IMSA, because they get the call and they're, and they're trying to prioritize that call. There's a little bit longer delay in that, because if there's something that automatically is life-threatening, they get a call and someone says, this person is not breathing, they're unconscious, they automatically can hit a button and send that over to fire, and then we go. The challenge, though, is you get that call and they're trying to get the information to be able to get that if, out to say, this is a priority call, we need to send fire. So that's the reason you see that they have two minutes to do that, and that's the reason it's a little bit slower on getting that over to us. We are working with them currently to identify ways to prove, improve that. I feel that we need to improve that, and that's us working together collectively, and we meet every other Friday to work on issues like that, so we have a good relationship with IMSA. This is also another important aspect of our response times, and this is what we know is out-of-shoot time. That's the time that we get the alarm till we're in that apparatus and we're heading out of the fire station. We know it's a priority, and we get these calls, we want to get out in a quick and efficient manner. The goal of this is 60 seconds or less, 90% of the time. When we first started this, it's the same as the other measures. We really wasn't showing the information to our personnel, we didn't gather that and say, here's where you're at. When we started doing that in, in 2015, you could see where we're at, 58%. Over time, just by putting this in front of them, we report it every month, our officers report that in their goals, you can see that we're at 90%, and a lot of that is self-correcting. Our personnel want to do a great job, they just didn't know where they were at, because when we first started asking them, how do you think you're doing? They're all like, oh, we're getting out in that 60 seconds. Then you really put it in front of them, they see where they're at, and they want to meet that. So it's something I'm really proud to say they've worked hard to do, and you can see where our goal's at for FY20. This one is a little bit busy, but it, we wanted to show you all three of them together. We actually broke out this, our goals this year, what we're trying to show. In the past, it was strictly EMS calls and fire calls. And what we started looking at in our fire calls, that had wildland, inter, wildland urban interface, which is grass fires, car fires, every fire type that we responded to was all collective in one. We wanted to break that out, because we know when we respond to a structure fire, there's a high probability that there could be life involved. So we wanted to see where our response times were just for fire calls. So we broke that out. We're still tracking the other fires, we wanted to see where we're at. When you look at that, that's the red line, the top one. We're at 66% this year, we were 68 last year. We've been running an average, when we put them all together, about 59%. So what we think, we, we haven't really drilled down on this, but just on the surface, probably where the difference is, a lot of the other fires we respond to are car fires, grass fires, trash fires. We don't have a good address you're responding to, so you may have a delay in that response. So we wanted to break that out, so our citizens, our residents could see that, so U.S. city leaders could see that, our firefighters could see that. On life-threatening calls, this is our percentage of where we're at, we're at 66.48 this year. On the EMS calls, we stayed pretty steady, about 59% across the board, and then you see the other fires at 56. So we wanted to show that in relation over the years and where we're at on those calls. This is our strategic result, and this is kind of interesting, because you noticed earlier, that's, there was a five-minute response in five minutes or less, and we're, and, and we're trying to show you the difference in here. This is seven minutes or less, 70% of the time. And the reason that we add this in as our strategic result is, we want to collectively look at all responses, the, the incidents that we showed you upfront, that's going to be 82,000, and to see how many of those we're meeting in seven minutes or less, 70% of the time. And this is actually from the time we receive the call till we arrive on scene. So this shows the full data of the response. One of the areas that's important in that, that we look at, is that 58%, 59%, when we started tracking our out-of-shoot time, this was when we really seen that marked increase. There are all correlation there, you'll see in FY15. When we started saying, how fast are we getting out of the station, and we started tracking that, you could see it made a difference in our seven minute, uh, seven minutes or less response time, and that's extremely important. And that's extremely important of seeing those working together. And we know that we're actually doing effective measure and looking at those responses, and we're doing the right thing when we're tracking it. Some other areas that are strategic results that we do and we have set up to make sure our residents feel safe and secure is we look at how many structure fire fatalities we have, how many community risk reduction activities. And that's actual events where we're out in the public and we're doing, and we're presenting a safety message. It's not just contacting our residents. It's where we put up a smoke alarm, we talk to them about 911, we talk to them about life safety measures, and we track those every day. The goal was for every fire station to try to at least accomplish four. And our total goal over the year would be 40,000. And we, a lot of stations get a lot more activities than that, some less, just because of the location and where they're at. But we really want to focus in that area, making sure we're having those contacts, and it's meaningful contacts where we actually impart some education on our residents. And then we also look at the number of smoke alarms that we distribute every year. And then one thing that's really big is building up our young people within our society of understanding public safety education and how to be safe. So we have a percentage of elementary public schools in Oklahoma City Limits receiving fire and life safety presentations per year. I'm really happy on this one because we used to do, just do second graders, and now our focus is K through 5. So we're really trying to build a good foundation for them as they grow up to understand life safety. And it's not just about fire safety, we actually do gun safety, water safety, a lot of different areas to try to help them be safe in what they're dealing with every day. This is the measure that we look at, and everyone understands over the last two years, or maybe not understand, that you have knowledge of. We've had a rough couple of years in 2018, 2019. We had far more fire fatalities than are acceptable. And that's something that we take responsibility for and that we want to address, and we have not taken it lightly. Some of the areas we looked at is our smoke alarm distribution and public safety education. I was really happy when we was looking at this, the blue areas are the areas that were meeting our goals, were above that. The red are unfortunately those areas were not. When we first put this together and we went over it, we had three fatalities. Unfortunately, in February, we had a little rough go. We've actually had three fatalities. We don't know 100% if they're fire fatalities yet because they run through the ME's office and then we get the report back. But unfortunately, we had one in an apartment fire in the month of February, and two in a RV-type travel trailer outside of residence. So we're still looking at those and seeing where we're at. That would still put us at six. Our goal would be zero, but that would still be below the goal of 1.03 per 100,000 population. And we're still going to work hard in that and make sure that we try to get that to zero, or we work hard to get that to zero. Now, some of the areas that we look at is our smoke alarm installation. They're free to the public. We put them out any time someone calls, they live within the city, we put them out, we put them in their house, and we put them to code. That's what I'm happy about, that we don't just go in and put one up. We put one inside of every bedroom and one outside of the bedroom. So we make sure that we put them to code when we, when we install them. You'll see the reason FY19, we had a large number there. Unfortunately, that was a year we had a lot of fatalities. And when we do have fire fatalities, we don't take those lightly, and we canvass those areas. And we go out with a, a lot of time with our partners being Red Cross, or it might be our, our, our Fire Academy, Citizens Fire Academy personnel, or our Explorer Scouts. We work together. So you see an increase unfortunately in those numbers in that. But we still focus on that. We still have a one-call number, 316 BEAT, that they can call. It's in English and Spanish. And we also have that online. I'm happy to say, May 2nd, we're going to be working with the Red Cross for our canvassing in a couple neighborhoods, the Sound the Alarm campaign, and it's in the Capitol Hill and Capitol View neighborhoods. And we'll be working together in collaboration to effectively get some smoke alarms out there and people that need them. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
You mentioned life-threatening calls in the presentation today. That reminded me of Saturday night at the firefighter's ball. There was one award was given for the submerged car that went into the Oklahoma River.
It's on the floor. Can you hear me now? Sorry. But you mentioned life-threatening calls, and that reminded me...
At the firefighter's ball, the story about the submerged car in the Oklahoma River, and I was so proud of our force that dove into the river, set aside their own concerns about their lives, and saved that person. It was a great story. It was very moving. And I want to echo Larry's comments. I had a great time there that night. But more importantly, I want to congratulate all those people that received awards that night for their bravery. It was, it was amazing, and I'm glad I was there to experience it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate you coming. It's an honor. We have a thousand personnel that do a great job every day. But it's an honor when we get to look at those that went above and beyond. So thank you for being there and in that time, we could celebrate that.
Chief, this is really going to be addressed to our city manager. With 70% of all calls being emergency medical situations, can we meet with IMSA to see how they might take on a larger portion of those calls? I mean, does it begin with how the call is first placed to both the fire department and IMSA?
That's something the chief was talking about before and looking at priority is that that's something they meet with, and they meet with them, and they're looking at that on a regular basis to evaluate what they can do to ensure that we're not sending our equipment out and our officers out when it's not necessary. And so they're constantly working together in conjunction to try to make sure we're addressing that correctly.
Well, and maybe I'm getting ready to say something that's incorrect or inappropriate, but couldn't IMSA even take on some of the medical emergencies and save the fire department for other types of calls?
I'm not sure of the answer to that. I mean, it's...
The challenges you have is, when you look at the system, I've really been talking to our residents and to people out in the community. When we look at, we try to think of it as a system. The challenges you have is the number of ambulances they have on the street.
Correct.
Would, would the, it would be, would our residents be okay with the response times? Because where we're strategically located throughout the city, the fire stations, we can get there quicker.
Yeah.
More than, most of the time, we arrive first, we can provide that life-saving measures, and then the ambulants come in and take them. So it would be, as Mr. Freeman said, we look at every response that we have and really dive into it and try to pay attention and say, are we seeing? Because there's a lot of codes in the system in that medical priority dispatching. And we try to go through those and look at, and we'll evaluate a certain code and make a determination that out of those, only two people out of 100 went to the hospital. And we'll sit down with IMSA and say, do we remove that code because it appears it's not life-threatening? And so we constantly evaluate.
And I think the reality too is that we've got, you know, fire services, one, is like preparedness is really what we're about. And there's not as many structure fires or fires that we're dealing with. So it's kind of a balance of, you know, making the best use of our resources. We have resources available that can respond, and they're prepared, and they're trained and respond effectively and show up quickly. So I think it's a matter of making sure that the use of those, those officers and the equipment to respond to those types of calls isn't interfering with other duties and other responsibilities, but that we can use those together. So I think it's, it's constantly evaluating that balance of, is it pressing too much demand where we're not able to respond to fires as we should? So I think it's, it's really a good use of being able to maximize the resources.
I agree, and I understand all that. But from a perspective of what's the optimum cost of providing these services? Has that been analyzed? Could it be provided the same level of service at a less expensive level?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we've evaluated it quite like that. It's something that we could discuss and see if we can take a different look at that and see if, you know, we can evaluate that.
Yeah. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But no, the police, the fire department did a great job, and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
The only, the only other item that we have in here, we have the claims and payroll in still, but we have the Convention of Visitors Second Quarter Report, Convention of Visitors Bureau. And I appreciate their work that they do to help promote the city. And we don't have a presentation on that today, but if there's any questions that you have, we'll be glad to get information for you.
All right. Well, that concludes City Manager Reports. We have a pretty healthy stack of citizens to be heard today, and that's Item 13. And it begins with someone who signed up in advance and is on the agenda. So we'll start there. Item 13A, Rick Carter at 5033 Northwest 24th Place regarding groundwater flooding. And if you would state, I guess your name and address is already on here, but if you would just keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Thank you, and thank you for your patience.
Yes, sir. My name is Rick Carter. I'm at 533 Northwest 24th Place, Ward 3. I am a pastor for 46 years. I work out of Beth Haven Baptist Church as a church planner. In June of this last year, we purchased a home, the home that we're living in right now, from HUD, which is normally how I buy my homes. I remodel them and so I can get them cheaper and be able to sell them when I move, or God moves me. We purchased that home, moved in in July. We put about $40,000 after we purchased it into remodeling that home. In August, the 28th, I think's the right date, we had a flood. We, basically, the whole house was flooded. We had up to three and a half feet of water in our backyard. We knew that there was drainage back there, and we knew that that was for that. We just never dreamed of it getting into our home. And of course, we went on. The next day, I contacted the city water department, I contacted everybody I knew how to get a hold of. I even contacted our city council member, and they helped me get in contact with a few more. I was told to get in contact with the Action Committee, I was told to get in contact with different folks. Everybody that came out and looked at it said, this is a mess, this shouldn't be happening, all the city employees. Everybody said you need to go to the Action Committee, that you need to check and maybe put in a claim with the city, which we proceeded to do. We were told that it would be 90 days in the city to look at that, and so we waited that process out impatiently. I'm an action person. So I would go down every two or three weeks to find out what was going on, seeing the attorneys, going to the attorneys, seeing somebody tell me what was going on. I had trouble, nobody had ever returned my calls. Same way with the, the city engineers. We, we had died of working with the city engineers because they were supposed to send somebody out to tell us what was happening there. Finally, at the day before the 90 days was up, I was called just before Christmas. I was told that they had approved reverse, reimbursing us for that, some of that expense. Our insurance had taken care of a couple things, not flood-related, because we didn't have flood insurance at that time, I do now. But they, they, you know, reimbursed, they were going to reimburse us for like $14,600 if it was approved by you, it's supposed to come before you on January the 8th. In the meantime, the engineer came out and basically showed me the mess. And there's no way that it can be fixed without major construction. He said it's going to be probably over $15 million to fix my problem. Now, that means that they'd have to resize the whole, I'm sorry, excuse me, resize the whole area there, enlarge it. And this is a problem that has actually grown over the years based upon permits and people that we're building up. Right now, on Moulton Drive, in fact, all of our flooding actually had, we had about a quarter of an inch of red dirt everywhere. It came off of Moulton Drive where they had built that property up there, and they've actually done construction where it pours straight toward the drainage disc that comes into our backyard. So this is a problem not going to be solved. Our drainage is set to take care of about 13.6 cubic foot a second, is what I understand. And just in average rain, we're going to have over 100 and some square foot per cubic foot, however they measure that, come into our yard during the measurable times. In other words, there's nothing that we can do to fix it. Now, here's my problem. I bought this property from HUD. I didn't hear anything about it flooding. It's something that evidently has happened before, probably why the people lost it at HUD, they gave up. But the bottom line is, I can't sell the property now. My wife and I are getting a few years older, that's why we moved to this place. We thought this would be our last house before they ship us off to a home. And we, well, my wife's 67 years old, and every time a cloud comes up, she loses it. Quite honestly, she's scared to death because of what we went through. We moved out of our house twice. First, to clean up the mud, the rain, and replace the flooring that had just been put in. And so we had to replace all of that. The second time, because mold had come up, and so three weeks after we moved back in, we had to move back out, cut all the bottom of the whole house out and replace all of that. That being said, to sell a house, I have to sign a statement saying that this house floods. And then when it's presented before people, I don't know of many that are looking for a home that's going to put what I have in this home and want to pay for that home. The, it's been recommended to me by several people in the city employment that I should present this to have it brought back. However, when I did turn in a letter to Eric Ringer, what happened is I turned it in a couple days before we were going to be having the reimbursement come before you. When that letter hit the desk, it hit the different folks here, and it was brought up before the council, or not before the council, but before some other people. And they said, let's put a break on that. So they pulled it from the city council meeting. And they went before and they had meetings, and I was never involved in any of those, I would be willing to. But they had meetings, and in the meantime, they determined that I guess legally, the city is not responsible if the structure had been done over 10 years prior to where the problem was reported. And so now I am in a situation where the city backed out after I'd signed the letter and turned it in of reimbursing me. And they said there was no way they'd buy it back because there was no, it was not, they were not liable for this. So I'm coming to ask for mercy from the city. I have no idea how to solve this issue. I've got to do something different for my wife's sake, but I don't know how I can sell this place. I could put it on the market, but it's, chances are not real strong that I would get anything close to what it is worth. So that's why I'm here today and asking for mercy. I do want to thank you, men and ladies, for your work. I appreciate you, I appreciate what you're doing to our city. I do want to say that very, very much so. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did let you go on a bit longer than three minutes because you signed up in advance. I wanted to show you some grace. Do we have a response from Eric or Amanda?
Sure. So there are two issues that were presented to the municipal councilor's office in the form of a claim. The first being for the August flood that he mentioned. There, the drainage infrastructure in this area was built in 1979. Statute of limitations on any potential liability, not that we're saying there would be liability, but any potential liability would have run as of 1989. The attorney who first reviewed this was new to this area of law, had made a recommendation for repair or paying, payments for the repair of the August flood. Upon review with the attorney supervisor, it was explained to that attorney that this would not be an event that would be compensable under the law, or that we would recommend as being compensable under the law. At the point in time that we had gathered additional information and had been informed that there was a request that Public Works buy the house, not just the recovery for the damages, but actually purchase the house. We did have a series of meetings to determine the potential liability for an allegation of taking from the flooding. We do not believe there's a potential for liability. If there's further discussion that needs to be had on that topic, we recommend you go into executive session to have that discussion with your attorney. In this scenario, the 90 days has run on this claim. So the remedy that the claimant has is they can file a lawsuit with the district court and make the allegations that he has made in his claim as well as his allegation of taking, and we can defend that lawsuit as appropriate.
Okay.
Maybe we consider this an executive session. Executive session.
Well, I don't think we can do that.
So it's not on the, it's not on the agenda for today, but we can put one on for the next council meeting.
Okay.
Okay. I didn't understand, what was that?
Well, he, the, the mood of the council is to discuss this matter in an executive session, which we can't do today because it wasn't on the agenda. But it has been asked that that be put on our next council agenda.
Okay. I would appreciate that very much. You know, I understand the 10 years and everything else. I also understand that in the last few years, things have been built there that's caused greater grief and more problems. That's what I was told by the engineering department, and it's just going to get worse. So I'm just sharing that with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Three hours later, Elizabeth Wilson. It is now, you are now the Elizabeth set to speak. Thank you for your patience. If you would mind stating your name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Wilson. I am here with a few other people. My comments might make more sense if they were to follow theirs, but I'm going to go ahead, go ahead anyway. So, we are concerned with 5G technology and I'm here to give you a few statements on what other communities are doing to stop it or at least slow it down. They will explain to you exactly why this is an issue to begin with. So, communities are sending letters to the FCC demanding they provide evidence that 5G technology is safe and to update its research. It hasn't been updated since 1996. There are being, there are calls for a moratorium backed by many doctors and health officials, requests for a reassessment of the current regulations, city notices sent to all residents and parents of schoolchildren prior to the 5G cells installed within 500 feet while asking the city to put clear warning signs at each 5G site stating that this is a radiation 5G site. So, the 1996 Telecommunications Act removed the public's right to oppose cell towers on the grounds of environmental impacts from radiation and health effects to humans. So, much creativity is needed to find workarounds to slow or stop the infiltration of these unwanted and unnecessary microwave antennas in our neighborhoods. So, instead, cities and towns can regulate cell sites based on aesthetics and placement of the devices, but many cities are still having success halting 5G construction based on health concerns. So, less than two years ago, the FCC passed a new rule putting the federal government in complete control of 5G rollout. Last year, President Trump issued an executive order stating that local and state bodies must now approve new 5G within 90 days. And the FCC has been accused for colluding with big wireless on the massive 5G rollout. So, across the world, 5G is being halted and being asked to FCC to provide further research about its safety. That includes Ireland, the UK, Wales, Brussels, France, New York, New Jersey, Louisiana, Italy, Bangladesh, Brighton, Switzerland, District of Columbia, California, Netherlands, Russia, Oregon, and Australia. They've all banned 5G. And many more are working towards that as well. So, I'm hoping it's Oklahoma's time to get something going before it's too late. I want to thank you for your time and I'm pretty warmed with how kind and respectful you all are. This is my first city council meeting, so thank you.
Thank you.
And this was just kind of a quick rundown to keep my presentation at a minimal. I have more.
Okay. Thank you. Sandra Treywick?
Hello. I have a whole speech prepared, but I saw that Agenda 11B from Councilwoman Nice actually addresses the 5G issue. I would like to ask some questions first, if I may, outside my three minutes. Councilwoman Nice, can you explain to us exactly what you mean by exempting small cell towers from said classification? What will they be exempt from?
I mean, you don't have to do this if you don't want.
Well, I can let our council explain more about that. The reason I brought this whole issue forward was because of my own concerns when it came to our communities and our neighborhoods. And in my opinion, I didn't feel that that should be an issue that we as a council have to bear that decision when we have an entity that can, as far as our Board of Adjustment, who can have the exception and bear those rights as far as that is concerned. So, that's why I brought that forward. As far as the small towers, that can be addressed with our municipal council, but that's the reason I brought it forward in the first place.
That ordinance was just changing the review process. It didn't change any restrictions or requirements or any of the regulations.
Who is the entity that you're referring to that would handle this instead of the city council?
It would be through our Board of Adjustments. And it's a city board.
Okay. So, when a cellular company applies for a permit, that board would then approve it?
It depends, it depends on the circumstances.
Laura McDevitt in the city attorney's office. So, the ordinance that was introduced today would impact the large wireless facilities that normally come to council for special permits. Those would be going to the Board of Adjustment for special exceptions instead. It would not impact our current review process for small cell wireless facilities.
And that's managed administratively. It's administrative process.
Correct. Okay. What is the special?
I just want to clarify because I think, and from my experience on council in the last 11 months, a particular reason why, and I think maybe one of you all can speak to this, is because the FCC is essentially tied to our hands and what we can do.
We understand that.
And so, we kept having all of these cases come before us.
And that's why we didn't want to be the bearer of.
So, they might be able to speak to that more detail.
All right. We understand the FCC did enact some things that took away your power and then the state of Oklahoma tightened that noose and made it even worse for you. And we're here today because we want to help you and we want you to help us. There are cities that are fighting back against 5G and Oklahoma City has a reputation for being a world changer. In the 1960s, Oklahoma City volunteered its citizens to be guinea pigs for the Sonic Boom Project. Y'all remember that? The citizens didn't like it and eventually they complained enough and they filed a lawsuit against the FAA. And because of the citizens of Oklahoma having that grit and having that tenacity and stopping sonic booms, we today are not wearing earmuffs and listening to sonic booms every hour. They thought this was the wave of the future and they thought, no matter the cost, we have to have sonic booms every hour. This 5G, Senator, US Senator Blumenthal asked the telecom companies, "Have you done any scientific studies proving that this is safe?" They finally admitted after hemming and hawing that they had done zero, spent $0 proving anything about this. This is non-ionizing radiation at close contact with human beings and they have not studied it. We do not want to be the next human experiment. Based on Oklahoma City's past, they changed the world in the sonic boom industry. They scrapped the whole project on the FAA level because they filed a lawsuit against the FAA. Some cities are filing a lawsuit against the FCC and demanding the rights of their citizens. We are begging you to do that for us. This will change the entire look of this town. There'll be multiple towers every 500 feet. In order for this technology to work, y'all are aware, it has to have a tower every 500 feet. That means AT&amp;T has a tower. And I did see you added that they could be put on one pole, which is, I guess, a good thing. So, instead of having one for AT&amp;T, one for Sprint, one for US Cellular, now you can have all three on one pole and that one house is screwed. But the rest of us have at least a few less of them every 500 feet. This can go, from what I understand, you all, if they put in a permit and it's on a corner in front of a school, which is happening.
Sandra, we're five minutes. There was some other cross-talk, so I let you go a little longer, but we can wrap it up.
Okay. You cannot deny it. However, on February 28th, 2020, in a statement from Erica Rosenberg, the FCC NEPA attorney, "All wireless telecommunications facility applications need an NEPA review." That's a National Environmental Policy Act review. Are you requiring that? I'm trying to help you. If you all don't know the law and you don't know what's required, they're not holding the cellular companies liable. When cancer clusters come up in school, someone will be liable. And if we're the ones issuing the permit, insurance companies are no longer covering wireless EMF cancers. They're excluding that from their insurance.
Sandra, we're five and a half minutes. I'm going to have to ask you this.
Okay. We would, if you need to consult with us, we've done hours and hours of research and we would love to help you and work alongside you if you would like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carmen Lindner? Carmen, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes.
Carmen Lindner, 3120 Rockhampton Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73179. Thank you for allowing us to be here today and thank you for your time. I too am here with my friends. We just have concerns about the 5G technology. So, I'm just going to bring another area of concern to your attention. And that's really why we're here today is to bring it to your attention because a lot of people just have no idea what's going on. 5G can decrease residential real estate, has a decrease effect on real estate. And our goal is to make real estate go higher. Like, I own a house. I want my property value to go up. I don't want my hands to be tied and the property value to go down. Well, these towers are being placed every 500 feet and we're basically walking up to homeowners and business owners and going, "Too bad. You have no choice." It doesn't matter. You're spending $300,000 on your house. It's now worth $30,000 less and that's too bad for you. So, just a few facts. Andrew J. Campanelli, a lawyer, stated that if your home is near a cell antenna, the value of the property is going down at least 4%. And depending on the size of the tower and the proximity to your home, it can go down up to 20%. The Appraisal Institute, which is the largest global professional membership organization for appraisals with 91 chapters throughout the world, has already educated its members on a cell, that cell towers should decrease the value of a home. So, when you're hiring appraisal, you know, they're coming in, they're looking, "All this work you've done." They're like, "Oh, there's a 5G tower. We're dinging the value of your home." Other countries that have acknowledged that the impact of cell towers are decreasing home values are Australia, Canada, England, New Zealand. All these have reports that home values are going down. According to the San Francisco Bay Area Journalist, 94% of people would not buy or rent a home next to a cell tower. Peter Harvey is a scientist for NASA and US Berkeley. He's also one of the hundreds of residents that protested this recently for the installation of Verizon cell towers in his community in East Bay, California. When his city council didn't pay attention and didn't listen to their concerns and moved forward, he chose to move. And here he is quoted saying, "I bought a house elsewhere, far away from any curb, far away from any microwave tower that they could ever put in." So, people are eventually going to be trying to move away from these. And again, they have to be located every 500 feet. So, we don't want people moving away, you know, from, and having to rethink their locations. Again, it's just important for us to keep our property values up and do what we can to ensure that for our community. And at the very least, if we know the property values are definitely going to be going down, at least look into the issue and not just flippantly go, "Ah, no big deal. Your home's going to go down. We're just going to not look into this issue." So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask our resident expert, Councilwoman Stone? So, if the 5Gs have a requirement of 500 feet to provide coverage, what's the current separation of the current towers that are in existence, the non-5G? How far do they have to be spaced at?
So, that is based on a ton of factors. Could be topography, available transmit power, bandwidth, capacity on that cell site. So, usually what you're seeing now, and I'm not talking about 5G, but when you see a company come in now requesting a cell site, it's usually infill for capacity reasons. In other words, the site that they have currently serving that area is blocking. They just, they need the capacity.
Right.
The end users in that area need capacity. So, I'm not a, certainly not an expert on 5G, but I did do some groundbreaking work on what we call DAS, Distributed Array Antenna Systems, in-building systems, systems through canyons in Southern California where you just couldn't put up one big tower. You wouldn't reach into the canyon. A lot of that is very low power. And I don't know what the transmit power is on 5G. My guess is it's pretty low because they are placing them every 500 feet. And they're probably doing that because the additional capacity needed too with the additional throughput, if that makes any sense. So, I personally, I want to dig into it and see what the design specs are on it. I think it's interesting. You know, my biggest concern has always been this transmitter.
Right.
Right? Because this has to transmit all the way back to that tower. And I'm holding this transmitter next to my head. And this is the one that, you know, we hand it to our kids all the time to keep them entertained now. That's the biggest concern for me.
So, radiation is coming out of your cell phone?
Oh, sure. It's got to go talk to wherever that tower is. And if that tower is 10 feet away, it's transmitting a lot harder than if the tower is 500 feet away. I can tell you that for sure.
Thank you.
Good morning. Do I need to say my address? Do I need to say my address? 8900 Estel Manor Circle, Oklahoma City. Okay. I'm also here speaking about 5G. I'm going to talk a little bit different, something that kind of hits home maybe for a lot of us, and that's how it will impact our weather forecasting. Because, you know, we live in tornado alley, obviously, it's very, very important that we have accurate forecasting. And because of, you know, because of the severe weather that we have, we need to know how we can prepare. We need to know what to expect. So, it being as accurate as possible is extremely important. And in March of last year, the FCC started auctioning off the 24 gigahertz spectrum to 5G networks. This is concerning because the 24 gigahertz spectrum is very, very close to the 23.8 gigahertz spectrum that is used by forecasters. They use this to look at water vapor in the atmosphere. And without this tool, they can miss a water vapor signal that might show that a storm is intensifying and also there's other pertinent information they get from that, like the strength and the path of a storm and many other things they can look at with that signal. And the frequencies are just so similar between 5G and water vapor that it would be nearly impossible for a forecaster to even tell the difference between them. So, the data collected with water vapor in the atmosphere would become unusable. It would be a tool that's not be able to be used anymore. The frequencies that 5G uses also could contaminate critical earth observations that are made by our weather satellites in space. And the head of the NOAA, Neil Jacobs, testified last May on Capitol Hill regarding this. And he said that 5G could possibly interfere with forecasting weather, reducing accuracy by as much as 30%. And he put on to say that it is possible that this type of interference in forecasting could set us back decades. So, essentially forecasting weather accurately further out than three days would be nearly impossible, which obviously that's, now we have 10-day forecast and that wouldn't be possible anymore. It would be setting us further back with that. And then, to add to this, the 24 gigahertz spectrum is not the only wave band that's being auctioned off. There are several other ones that the FCC is auctioning off that are used by weather forecasters that look at ice and snow, clouds, atmospheric temperatures. Because we already have 4G, we have some abilities that are compromised with weather forecasting already. So, this kind of would add to that. The more abilities that we lose, the greater the impact that we would have in our communities. And our lives would be impacted by poor warnings about major storms, impaired forecasts, and loss of life. And I guess I would ask, who would be held responsible for, you know, things that would happen because we wouldn't be able to have accurate forecast? So, I would just implore our city to look at this, maybe the ramifications a little bit more, not just with weather, but with health and with all the other aspects that could come into play when we roll this out. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. John Pettis?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. John Pettis, 1332 Northeast 54th Street, Oklahoma City, 73111. At the last city council meeting, there were several individuals appeared before you concerning the cease and desist order that was issued on a proposed grocery store to be located in northeast Oklahoma City, Ward 7. The cease and desist order was given because required permits had not been taken. Those permits include electrical. individuals appeared before you concerning the cease and desist order that was issued on a proposed grocery store to be located in northeast Oklahoma City, Ward 7. The cease and desist order was given because required permits had not been taken. Those permits include electrical, plumbing, gas, and water sewer and trash collection. The individuals involved in this business endeavor knew or should have known that permits were required. The city has continued to be a great place to live, and it's only because the city's staff and the city council ensures that the ordinances adopted are enforced. And I'd like to commend the staff and the council, Ms. Nice, for ensuring that the safety, the health and safety of its residents continue to be priority number one in moving this city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Washington?
Thank you. 2900 of these 18 streets. I had no idea. Now, I've always heard about people saying about the five Gs and all that stuff. I think I might look more deeply into this thing here. I wonder is that why they say in my phone I got four Gs? I want to know what that means now. Now, I'm going to get a fifth one? I don't know. I've seen it before, four G. Anyhow, man. Well, let me say y'all, it's been obviously entertaining, very informative, a situation that I'll not quickly or easily let pass by. Let me say you're all invited this March 20th to a district court hearing in which Michael Washington has proven without an attorney how powerful he is and about ready to get rid of that board, so-called Board of Directors for the Freedom Center. Leonard Benton, your has-been. Again, all of y'all out here invited on March 20th, District Court, Oklahoma County, Senate Trump Judge. As I've always told you, I feel wonderfully powerful, educated enough, mentally sane, and legally competent to handle my own affairs. You know what? It's so great when you can stand here knowing that you have the confidence that only God gives you in which you work it to perfection, not better or greater or less than anyone, but you will in fact be determined to accept nothing less than being given the credit, do you? Because anyone who's sitting here, if you did something good or great profoundly accessible, recognizable, you know what? Michael Washington will be the first to be a good citizen in recognition. Okay? Now, people don't have to give me my recognition, but I know I'm a mover and a shaker. Really, some call me a tree shaker. You know what I mean? Because like I said, if I can't get my fruit, reach it, I'll shake that tree no matter how hard it is. Like I said, if I have to be jacking the beans, start to go up and get it. But again, the Freedom Center again is my baby, my project. I alone went down and preserved it. I alone with all the meetings, I alone should not be excluded, and I alone will not be excluded. And those people that I talk about now, but it's too late now, they could have easily come and say, "Mr. Washington, can we work together?" No, 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 no. Oh, no, we're going to bulldog you, Mr. Washington. We don't care about you, your name being synonymous with Clara Lucas now, because I've even taken it further than she has. We don't care about you went down to the historical preservation commissions by yourself. We don't care about you went to the city planning commission by yourself. We don't care that you went, finally, other than the two or three, this little group that was sitting before me. We went to the finalization in May, excuse me, August 28th in 2018. We don't care, oh, that we suddenly came in, oh, we're going to do great things now. Mr. Freedom Center, no you're not. Oh, because by the way, got a big old nice fat lawsuit right here. It ain't quite gone in yet. Y'all see that? Michael don't lie.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yes. Once again, all those people had to do, they had to be nice, respectable, recognize me, everything would have been fine.
Mr. Washington, you have two minutes. Thank you for your time. We have two executive sessions to handle.
Y'all have a great day.
We will return.